Okay, Mr. Chair. Both microphones are live. We are recording.
Thank you. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Hamilton Plan Commission meeting for December 17th, We're doing a multimedia meeting tonight, so we welcome everyone and we will try to work out the kinks as we go. We have welcomed Plan Ham- uh, the TV Hamilton and we're also live on Facebook and a couple other, in addition to Zoom. So, we will begin with roll call, please.
Certainly, sir. Sandlet for Blue.
Here.
Horstley. Horstley? Horstley is here. Matthews?
Here.
McAllister?
Here.
Moller?
Here.
Von Stein?
Here.
And Vanderhorst for Smith?
I'm here.
We do have a call, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I would like to start tonight by introducing our staff that are here with us from the Planning Department. Our Director of Planning is Mrs. Liz Hayden. Our Associate Planner, who has done Newman's, Newman's work for the presentations, is Mr. Edward Wilson. And also remotely, we have our Planning and Zoning Administrator, Mr. Larry Bagford. So, they've done a lot of work and I want to recognize them. And for those that are here and you wonder who they are, you know, who these people are, I want you to, to know. So, the first item, we have a swearing-in process, so if you want to speak tonight, you will need to be sworn in. And Mrs. Hayden will do the swearing-in of participants tonight.
Thank you very much. So, in a minute, we'll kind of check everyone in and give people an ordering system, but in the meantime, before we get into that portion, if you think that you may decide to speak tonight on any of the issues that are on our agenda, we ask that you raise, or stand up, raise your right hand, and repeat "yes" to the following statement. Do you affirm that the testimony that you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, has everyone, are all the attendants muted again?
One second, please. All participants are muted.
Thank you. So, would you, would you go, it says that we're muted. Okay. Can, can you go back to the previous slide where we kind of bring, provide some, we'll start at the beginning of the meeting format information? Thank you. So, hopefully, everyone can hear me okay. We wanted to go over some meeting guidelines for the evening to help ensure that everybody who is interested has an opportunity to speak and that it's a more orderly meeting than we had last time. We apologize. We're learning how to do all this. We have large numbers of people and participating in different ways, so we learned some things and we're trying to make sure this meeting runs more smoothly. So, we are going, we asked those who are in, participating in person to sign in and let us know what they want to speak on. And after we get through this meeting format, we will finish signing in those who are participating remotely, so we will get that information. We will unmute participants who are participating online, one by one. Please note that unmuting is a two-step process, so once staff unmutes you, you will be asked to unmute yourself. And if you're participating via phone, you want to do that using star six. Otherwise, if you're on a computer or tablet, you'll get an alert asking you to unmute yourself. And if you could tell us your name, address, and which public hearing you plan to participate in, that would be helpful and will get you signed in. And then, we just swore everyone in, so thank you very much for doing that part. Next slide. For each agenda item, we will, staff will provide a presentation on the case, then the public hearing will open, so everyone can participate during the public hearing. The applicant will be called first to speak and answer questions. And then, we have, one representative may speak for each homeowner association, including their attorney if present, and must be identified as such prior to the item's announcement. We have that to state that those, that, because then we will open it up after the homeowners' association to all people that want to participate. They, and, so everybody will get an opportunity to speak, but we are putting the representatives from the homeowners' association first, we're recommending that at least. And then, we'll, everybody else will be called one by one from the list created at the beginning of the meeting, and we are asking that you stay within three minutes to speak, and that if your point has already been made or question's already been answered, we ask that you refrain from asking and are bringing it up again, just out of the, in an effort to be as timely as possible tonight. And that once all comments have been made, public hearing will be closed and the Planning Commission will deliberate. Next slide. It's a little difficult to do these meetings where there's different ways to participate, so, and one thing we heard from last time was that some people were muffled, so we're asking everybody, please speak in the microphone, note your name and address, and when you're speaking, please note that you're addressing the commissioners and the chairperson. And if you have questions, please ask them to the chairperson, and he will answer them or call on a staff member to answer them at his discretion or the developer. Each participant may speak only one time. Please do not reapproach asking to speak again. And if further clarification is needed by the commissioners, the chairperson reserves the right to recall a participant even if the public hearing has been closed. Questions may be written and given to staff. Each must be accompanied with the name and address of the petitioner for the record. Is that the, the last part, Ed?
I believe so.
That is the summation of our proposed format for the evening.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate all the work that has gone into this. The first item on the agenda for the commissioners, we have the minutes from the December 3rd, 2020 meeting. Were there any corrections to be noted? Hearing none. By unanimous consent, we will deem those to be approved, and we will proceed to the first agenda item, which is a major plan development amendment to allow for the creation of 18 detached condominium-style apartment buildings, 101 dwelling units, on the existing vacant, vacant lot, 18 and a half acres at 220, 2200 Northwest Washington Boulevard. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Ed Wilson. I will be presenting this planning commission case on behalf of the Planning Department. As you've heard, this is an old business item. It was tabled on December 3rd, 2020. This is a request for an amended plan development as a final plan for condominium-style-type apartment development on the property in question. The property is owned RPD. Advocate is Mr. Greg Thurman. I'll try to be brief and succinct with this presentation, going over the key cornerstones and changes. Hopefully, it won't take too much time, so we have more time to address any public hearing comments and comments from the public. Project proposal: To build 18 one-story detached condominium-style apartments on the property in question. That is why we are here, for an amended final plan. Any type of change to an already-zoned plan development needs review and approval or denial from the Planning Commission through a public hearing process. The request also includes two discretionary RPD points, since every RPD development needs to meet a number of, of set points at a minimum. A waiver from RPD points, since the project is deficient. And finally, a waiver from the multifamily requirements for RPD. If you'll give me one second, I'm going to remute everyone so that we can have an uninterrupted presentation. We do ask that the public save questions for after the presentation. Okay. Continuing. The project proposal: Condo-style apartments. The density is about 5.5 units per acre. The buildings proposed range from three to eight units per building. So, the sizes in question are about 5,400 for a three-unit, 8,000 square feet for a four-unit, 11,000 for a five and six units, as well as 13,000 to 15,000 for seven to eight units. The applicant's development timeline is the following: That it's going to be one phase of development. If approved, they would start construction six months after permit approval, and this is subject to COVID delays. And the timeline of completion, the applicant estimates is about 26 months. You're looking at a location map in question, an aerial photo. The red line delineates the property in question. This property has been for sale for about 10 years or so. It's adjacent to the Villas of Hamilton West Fourth Flex Development. It represents one of the first proposals for a long vacant property that has reached the stage, and again, because of PD, it requires Planning Commission review and approval. You're looking at some of the photos of the property in question, showing you the existing conditions. We're looking northbound from North Washington here. And here is on the site itself, we're actually at the southern portion of the site, looking northward. The site contains more foliage as one goes deeper and more northly into the property in question. Now, we are looking at the existing retention pond that borders both this property and the adjacent Villas of Hamilton West. The applicant noted in their application and conversations that the existing pond would serve the site drainage's need for the proposed Redwood development. Site plan, this is what's submitted with the application items. They are going to, again, use the existing retention pond. You see the 18 buildings in a curvilinear-type public street. Again, the proposal is for those 18 detached one-story apartment units, that's actually 101 units. That's actually been revised thanks to a late-minute submission from the applicant, which we'll get into further into the presentation. The access to these properties would be made primarily through a proposed public street, about 1,900 feet in course. They propose a monument sign at the Northwest Washington frontage. They're also proposing a 40-foot landscape buffer along the perimeter of the development. Some as-built examples were included with the applicant's presentation and applicant items. Building materials will vary by building type. It's primarily stone on the front facades. Highly visible facades would have a mix of siding types with a stone wainscoting, the stone bottom that's about two feet in height. The other side and rear features feature the, the same wainscoting as well. They'll have vinyl fence partitions and real patios. And landscaping is proposed along the front and perimeter of the buildings in question. One of the notes from the applicant was that the horizontal siding in question is actually Everlast. Per the applicant, it's not vinyl and is more like a hardy plank, but longer-lasting. Also submitted with the applicant's items were building characteristic materials. Again, as I said, stone veneer, it's a prestige in an Ohio white vein color, and there are at least a minimum of 50% of the stone on the front facades of the buildings in question. Second, there is the Everlast siding, that's the horizontal siding I cited, that will be used for most of the pedestrian-level parts of the facade. These would come in those earth colors, like misty top and sandy dune. And number three, we have the vinyl shake siding at the gables, and the color varies there. Streets and parking, again, they're proposing a new public street. It's 24 feet wide and approximately 1,900 feet in length. It's a 50-foot wide right-of-way with four-foot wide sidewalks. Note that the form for the presentation had the second emergency connection that has since been removed due to the applicant's revision, and we'll get into that once we get further into this presentation. Three private access drives would be there for the remainder of the onsite access. And they also proposed 48 guest parking spaces scattered in about clusters of five to eight spaces throughout the development question. RPD requirements. As I've mentioned, RPD, any new RPD development needs to meet a set amount of points as well as other requirements, since this is a multifamily development. The points in question: A multifamily needs 18 points. There's also the multifamily RPD requirements, of which three or four are needed, and I'll get into that. Landscape buffers needed, as well as addressing the anti-monotony standards and building design standards. In terms of points, with the revised application, Redwood achieves nine to 11 points. The reason why it has that range is because those points are dependent on two discretionary points that the Planning Commission can grant if a project reaches a certain criteria. That's why you see the range of nine to 11 points. Multifamily RPD requirements: Three or four are needed. The application achieves two of those items, and I'll get into that once we get to that topic. The landscape buffer, they do override one, it's 40 feet all around. And the anti-monotony standards and building design standards have been addressed per both the residential standards and the requirements of the RPD. You were, the agenda that went out to you in the staff report, they included a scorecard for RPD points to help us guide through, and I'll just go through that briefly. One, there is an open space requirement. It actually is needed for an RPD. The Redwood application did have 5% of their passive open space at least as part of the total acreage, therefore, they get the three points for that. Next, there are other site amenities that a potential project can apply for or include in their proposal, and that goes towards getting more points toward the development and achieving the RPD points minimum. They achieved the one point for having the open space within, accessible to 75% of the proposed units within a fourth of a mile. Also, they achieved the four trees per dwelling unit, or they claim they have, they, the applicant has committed to doing this. Four trees per dwelling unit with two trees in the front yard. So, for the first one, they got one point for the open space and two points for the trees in the dwelling unit, which is increased from the standard. Next, we have a new item that was submitted to us from the applicant. They're going to propose a feature with a special design, so that could be a fountain or a public art feature. That'll be included with the revised plan. So, with that, they gained three points. However, notice that the minimum two roadway connections is no longer viable. That actually was part of their revision of the Redwood plan, so they're not getting the points for that. So technically, they're still at 11 points maximum if they get the two discretionary points. Next, oops, must be going backwards. Sorry about that. The applicant also submitted a response to the RPD points matter, basically listing out a number of amenities of the proposed development. I won't get into all of them, but they were included in the staff report, as well as other extra material and supplemental materials that have been forwarded to the commission and the public and in the lead-up to this meeting. Basically, they're proposing energy star compliant windows, high HVAC systems, granite countertops for their units in the kitchen and the baths, two-by-six framing for insulated walls with an R19 rating, dimensional shingles for the roofing, irrigated landscaping, and things of that nature. Gracious. Next, with the site plan items, they cited that they varied the rear yard setbacks and they're greater than 40 feet. They noted that they are constructing a public street and to the city standards, so specifications. Note that in several of the RPD cases we've seen in the past couple of years, most of the applicants try for a private drive. We do have a concern about when that drive starts to fail or needs to be adapted by the public, by the city. It should be to more of a city standard for better maintenance. They also noted the curvilinear street, which also helped address some of the issues with the anti-monotony section for multifamily and the sidewalks on both streets. They also addressed the Plan Hamilton items, and I'll go over those briefly. Basically, that per Plan Hamilton, higher-density single-family detached housing of up to eight dwelling units per acre may be appropriate. Redwood is proposing 4.5 dwellings per acre. And also, that such uses should be located on a collector's street. The applicant made sure to note that in their revised supplemental item. They also submitted other updates to the Planning Commission for their attention, and that was forwarded to you all during this week. I'll get some of the high points. One, again, the sculptures want to be proposed now. They're proposing now less units towards the single-family rear yards along Cathedral Lane, so that's the Hamilton West subdivision there. With that proposal, it would eliminate six of the units and bring down the total proposed building units from 101 to 95. They're also proposing enhanced screening along those single-family rear yards on a Charleston Court, excuse me. They will add three evergreen trees and three evergreen bushes in addition to their current plan. They noted that the Villas of Hamilton did not want the street connection, so that was removed. They were referring to the emergency connection up at the north. The Villas also wanted to see them take a share or some or all of the retention pond expense. Redwood replied that they will share or take over the full responsibility. And number 10, they noted a rear yard outbuildings issue, swing sets, trampolines, RV storage, and Redwood replied that they would be okay with including that in their lease agreement. Next are the multifamily RPD requirements. I'll go over these briefly. In addition to meeting the points, a multifamily also needs to meet three of the four requirements. The project in question achieves only two. They achieve that all entrances have a covered stoop. That's item number two, that's highlighted there. And number four, that each unit has a patio or deck of a minimum size of four by six feet. Regulations. There are also other regulations in considering a planned development of this nature, including the requested waivers and variances. Section 1132.43 of the zoning ordinance determines that four out of five need to apply to the development in question. A, that the development is in conformance with the city comprehensive plan. B, the development advances the general welfare of the city and immediate vicinity and will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding abutting areas. C, that the adequate utilities, excess rows, drainage, retention, detention facilities are provided. D, that the proposed development design, site arrangement, and/or anticipated benefits of the proposed development justify any deviation of the general design standards found in the code. And finally, E, the proposed development design exceeds the quality of the building and site design in the immediate area. Again, for a consideration of a waiver of variance to a plan, they need to meet four or five of these criteria. The Planning Commission needs to determine if they indeed meet four or five of these criteria. Next, we have Plan Hamilton. Plan Hamilton is the comprehensive plan of the city of neighborhood, the city of Hamilton. The plan designates this area as suburban neighborhood. The primary land use from the text indicated that it should be single-family detached homes, density of five units per acre or less. It does note, however, that higher-density single-family detached housing, up to eight units per acre, may be appropriate if designed for patio homes or cottage housing, or if it was located in a transitional area between commercial areas and lower-density residential, or located along an arterial or collector's street, which we noted that Northwest Washington Boulevard qualifies as. The process in all projects that are submitted for RPD go through our city's interdepartmental review, that it consists of all of our city departments, including engineering, public works, fire, and utilities. Interdepartmental had no objections, however, there were comments, and they were forwarded to the applicant as part of the staff presentation and the agendas that have gone out to both the commission and the applicant. Notification: As part of the public hearing, we nailed public notices to 163 property owners within 500 feet of this property. The Planning Department received multiple inquiries from the neighbors from the last meeting as well as up to this meeting. We've received plenty of these inquiries, more inquiries since the distribution of the staff report and the commission agenda. Staff endeavored to forward as many and all of those comments as possible. Almost all inquiries were in opposition to the proposal. This includes two petitions from the Villas of Hamilton West, as well as the Hamilton West Estates. A summary of issues, so we don't get too bogged down in reading things down. We'll summarize the issues from the neighbors, and it will, again, we'll let the public speak to the matter one by one, if they desire to. The summary of issues includes some of the following: The proposal is for rental properties instead of owner-occupied. The proposal is for apartments and not condominiums. The project has a potential to lower home values and property values. Traffic concerns on Northwest Washington Boulevard. More dwellings would add to that issue. Next, they noted the quality of the structures in question. Basically, there was a quote of vinyl boxes or vinyl slash siding in the rear facades would be visible from many of the nearby developments. There was also a concern that the apartments will not be kept up, so that was another issue. There was also a mention of a crime and safety concern. Next, we also have the owner's letter. This was forwarded to us and was to be read by the record. Mr. Jim Wells submitted this item to us, but we did not get a chance to read it in the last agenda item, so I'm pulling up that information now in order to read it into the record.
Okay.
One second, please.
Okay. The letter reads as follows: Tom, could you please present this letter at the zoning hearing scheduled for December 3rd, 2020? The letter reads: Hamilton West Estates LLC was the original developers of the 200-acre site in West Hamilton. At the time of zoning approval, we were issued an approval for a mixed PUD, which is a planned unit development, which included retirement homes, retail and professional along Washington Boulevard, condos on 38 acres, and upscale single-family homes. At that time, the city of Hamilton was in high approval for this development, and in return, our company completed Washington Boulevard through to West Elton Road at an approximate cost of $2 million. Much of the property was sold to the City of Hamilton School District, enabling the construction of the new ninth-grade school and the new elementary school. The balance of residential property is substantially complete, and there only remains the second half of the condo property, the 18 acres. And a portion of retail business property, some of which is under construction approval by the city for a full-service station and convenience store. The first half of the condo property was completed and sold as quickly as built by Foundation Development LLC on private streets, and the water retention area was fully developed for the second half currently proposed by Redwood. The condos were of the EPCON design and vary upscale and sold for near the price of this new single-family homes at the time. The company dropped the purchase option on the second half of the property and moved to Westchester, building the same product for 60K more per unit. At the time, we placed the vacant 18 acres for sale. Recent activity on sale interest included Ryan Homes for a condo development. They signed a purchase contract, and it seemed that the zoning was all in order. Unfortunately, the City Planning Commission decided that the project could only move forward with public streets, which diminished the density substantially and unfortunately caused Ryan to withdraw from the sale. We questioned at the time what was the intent of this, or if it was just a way to stonewall the condo project. To the best of our knowledge, there are no private condo developments in Ohio with public streets. Since this action prevented the sale, it has deprived the city, county, and school districts of substantial tax loss. Please bear in mind that the density proposed was the same as the first part of the condo development. There were many guarantees and bonding and assurances backing private streets, as was the first half of the development. Since that time, the city has issued zoning and private streets to Berkeley Retirement Development across the street. Development across the street, which further shows the inconsistency of the planning and zoning department. Next comes a prospective purchaser of the property, Randall Residence, a premier developer of retirement housing and independent care. We thought that this would be a perfect fit for the community, although it would have required a zone change. Again, the city did not approve the project based on TIF or bonding. This method of financing is assured, and there was no financial risk for the city. Again, another loss of tax revenue, jobs, and more. After making substantial effort, the client declined from the sale. Now comes Redwood, a developer of high-end, very upscale apartment developments and a very large and financially viable entity that actually retains ownership and operates their apartment neighborhoods. There is a current demand for housing, including upscale rental in Hamilton with nearby developments, Spooky Nook, and more people coming with new businesses. Please consider the favorable approval of this zone change and development. Thank you, Jim Welch, Welch Property Development. The motions in question. The planning commission can either approve, which is motion one, or deny, motion two, the proposed amended plan development for Redwood Apartments. They can also add or amend any conditions of approval. Any of the following motions can be used, and they were included within your staff report packets. In the event of approval, one, that planning commission take final action to approve the major amendment to the Villas of Hamilton West RPD as a final plan for the Redwoods condominium-style apartments, subject to the conditions of approval. In the event of denial, use motion two, that the planning commission take action to deny the proposal based on statutes and/or rationale. I'll highlight the conditions of approval, just so we have them on the record. The conditions of approval are as follows. One, construction drawings and documents for the proposed improvements in work shall be revised, subject to any current interdepartmental review comments or any future review requirements from the city. Number two, landscaping, site improvements, and all exterior finishes and other improvements be installed and maintained in good repair and replaced as necessary to remain in compliance with the approved final plan. Number three, all proposed landscaping items shall be reviewed and approved by the city municipal arborist. Number four, a revised plan and updated landscaping plan with planting counts shall be submitted to the city and reviewed and approved by both the arborist as well as planning staff. Number five, four trees shall be provided per dwelling unit, with two trees in the front yard planted at the location of the dwelling unit in question. Number six, exterior materials for the front facade shall be at least 50% brick and/or masonry. Number seven, that the facade shall feature decorative-type, high-quality siding, which is shake, scallop, horizontal siding, and so forth, to be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Number eight, the colors of the building facade shall differ and follow the standards of Section 1110, which is the anti-monotony standards. A number nine, that no more of 40 inches of concrete shall be exposed. Number 10, that all new dwelling units have a minimum size of nominally 1,300 square feet. We say nominally because the smallest one that is part of the Redwood proposal came out to 1,296 square feet, so we want to make sure it's in range. Number 11, that all new dwelling units shall have an attached two-car garage. Number 12, all driveways shall be paved to provide an impermeable surface per off-street parking standards per city and zoning requirements. Number 13, a public street shall be built per the submitted plans to the specifications and requirements of the engineering department. Number 14, private street shall be paved and subject to any requirements of the engineering department as well. Number 15, five-foot-wide sidewalks shall be constructed along the public streets and private streets of the development. Number 16, the findings of approval for the requested and required planning commission discretionary points are consistent with the requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary for granting such a request. Number 17, the findings of approval for the requested waiver of points is consistent with the requirements of the zoning ordinance and necessary for granting such requests. Number 18, the findings of approval for the requested waiver of the multifamily RPD criteria are consistent with the requirements of the zoning ordinance and necessary for granting such requests. Number 19, the remaining achieved points of the proposed development shall be attained and upheld. Any changes, deviations, or deficiencies that would nullify any of the earned points shall require an amended plan development submission and approval, meaning they would need to resubmit to the planning department. We would have another mail out and inform the public again and have another public hearing here as part of the planning commission agenda. Number 20, there shall be no increase in dwelling units, number of buildings, or building density beyond the approved number and plan, which is now the 18 buildings with 95 dwelling units, if the applicant remains consistent with that revision. Any change from this, any change from this shall require an amended plan development submittal and approval. So again, another public hearing at planning commission if they do change from this. Number 21, as part of the landscape buffer, there shall be an undulating, grass-covered mound or berm, minimum of four feet in height, along the property boundaries abutting the Villas of Hamilton West, as well as the Hamilton West Estates properties for further screening. All, number 22, all landscaping buffer plants will be of a sufficient maturity and height that they provide an immediate screen from the property. Number 23, rear patio spacious shall be at least 25% larger in size, and there shall be more substantial fencing between the building units. We'll leave it at that for brevity. That is a summation of my amended report. Mr. Chair, if you have an answer, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. This is a public hearing, and as such, we will want to let people have their say after we hear from the developer, and then we will hear from the speakers, from the adjoining properties, their homeowners association, or the like. We'll hear from them first before we open up to the public. So with that, we'll open the public hearing with Mr. Thurman, if you would like to come forward. Mr. Thurman represents Redwood Apartments.
Greetings, folks. My name is Gregory Thurman, 20 Village Square, Cincinnati, 45246. I am the acquisition manager and project manager for Redwood USA. So, we're here for part two tonight for several reasons. First of all, Redwood wants to be part of Hamilton. There's a good reason for that. The Renaissance in Hamilton over the past 20 years, I grew up in Hamilton County, coming out to Hamilton frequently for various reasons, is dynamic. I love Main Street. I love coming in on the weekends and shopping, having lunch, and sneaking a delicious treat from the Almond Sisters. But anyway, Redwood wants to be part of the Hamilton fabric. We have a proposal on the table that's unseen in Butler County, but we're building it in Hamilton County, in Claremont County, in Warren County, Montgomery County, Miami County, Green County. We have a fabulous, proven track record. We want to bring that to Butler County, and in particular, the city of Hamilton. Our proposal needs waivers. We recognize that. We've stepped up our materials. The quality of the building materials that we're using is no less than any homorama that's been built in the last 20 years, if not maybe a little better on a couple fronts. You can't put a building together with better materials than we're using. It's fabulous. The layout, the concept on this jiggity-jaggity L-shaped piece of ground that's an abandoned Phase II is a fabulous use to take advantage of. The timing's right. The market for this product, an upscale rental product, is in a 30-year-future phase right now. We started building this product, brand-new, in '04. The company's been, the company was established in '91. We bought used, bankrupt, multifamily product and turned it around. The very first condominium apartment that we bought in '91 has been renovated three different times and is getting more rent per square foot than any of our new product. It's small. It's one-bedroom. The point is, it was bought by our establishment. It's never been sold. It's been renovated several times. And 30 years down the road, we're getting a buck nineteen a square foot rent for a one-bedroom apartment that was in bankruptcy at one time. All of our new stuff rents out for about that price, depending on the market. This part of Hamilton is a great market. It's an upscale market. That's why we have so much opposition, right? We tried to submit enough information to not hide and present it tonight. We sent over case studies about property values. We sent over case studies from Harvard, from MIT, proving that a good, quality mix of housing is substantially better for appraised values in any neighborhood that includes that. So, I tried to send that out earlier in the week so people could throw darts at it and chew it up and do their own analysis and determine if it's bunk or not. I know the truth there. We've been doing that for several decades. So, we can go through the same material in my presentation that Edward covered perfectly. I don't think that's conducive to a good public hearing. I think there's opposition that needs to be heard, but the changes that we proposed are based on the questions and answers we had at the town hall meeting and last two weeks ago, public hearing. We've made an effort. When we're done and we get approved, this is going to be a beautiful place to live in, take a walk in, and enjoy for decades and decades to come. And we have a proven track record that the residents within a three-mile ring, that's called a marketing ring, will be the folks that are moving in here. They're already residents of Hamilton. These are family members that are going to move so that they can be close to younger families and participate in a family lifestyle instead of moving out of town to a retirement home. So, what I have to share tonight is as much emotion as you're going to hear on the counter side, and I get that. There's never been a public hearing that didn't have opposition. In 40 years, I've been doing this. So, the list of items that we've conceded to as far as the building materials, the reduction in units, the extra buffering at the single-family sides, that entire list of materials or items that I've presented garnishes no points under the current system. The current system's never considered a townhome apartment with an attached two-car garage. It's unheard of. It's not in Butler County anywhere. So, we're bringing something new to market. We're using the best materials available, and we have a strong market to take care of our business here, and we're going to keep it and be proud owners of it. So, I don't need to go through the presentation I submitted online yesterday. I think Edward put it online. It's very much the same as he presented, and I'm going to respect the process and not repeat what's been presented. So, if you have some questions right now before I sit down...
Are there any questions of the commissioners for Mr. Thurman at this juncture?
Chairman, I'd like to ask him a couple of questions if I could.
Mr. Mayor.
First off, I also want to thank the planning department for a professional manner in which you've worked with the applicants, worked with our citizens, worked with the planning commission, and your attention to detail. I mean, we did get all the staff reports and what people submitted since that December 3, I believe it was, public hearing. Well, thank you, Mr. Thurman, for being interested in Hamilton, Ohio.
Thank you.
And thanks for taking time to talk to the neighbors. If I've got this right, there's one roadway into your development, correct?
Yes, that's the only way you could possibly develop it.
Okay. And you're using the existing stormwater retention area that Hamilton West uses?
That's correct. And that has been advised that that was part of the original design, and we will prove that. In fact, we've done a preliminary analysis that we actually have more green space than was proposed when it was going to be the fourplex units that are there now.
I got a question or two if I could. How do you believe that your proposed development, design exceeds the quality of those that the neighbors have?
Mr. Mayor, we're getting comments that it's hard to hear us. Make sure to, like, really speak into the mic.
Really talk loud then, huh?
Yes, yes.
Can you hear me now? Well, can they hear me on the Zoom, I guess? That's probably the question. But I'll keep my voice up, and you just kind of tell me if I need to talk louder.
He said, "Thank you much better." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you much better, okay. All right, Mr. Thurman, how do you believe that your proposed development design exceeds the quality of the building and site design in the immediate areas?
I appreciate that. I just mentioned the open space that our plan is providing is less hard-surface areas than the Phase 1 of the 88-unit Villas next door. Those driveways wrap around the building on all four sides, and there's much less green space there. So, our plan, albeit lined up in a row instead of a quad or a pinwheel, allows for more green space on the site and more efficient use of materials to allow for green space and water control management, stormwater control management. The building products we're using, next door has Hardy Plank. You know, we were there at the clubhouse with the town hall meeting, and Hardy Plank has been proven over years that it's not as longevity-oriented as it was first presented. It does get blotchy, it does absorb water, and it's hard to hold paint on that product. We're using a PVC Everlast product. It's the same width and thickness, it's called solid-surface material, as Hardy Plank. It's color-through. It's cast in one color of a mold, so through the years, you'll never see a color change. And it'll last much longer than Hardy Plank that absorbs water. It's a concrete fabric material. I did notice the roofing structures at the Villas next door are three-tab shingles. That's because of the age of the product. When they replace that roofing, as the years go by, they'll probably use a three-tab shingle. We use a lifetime three-tab shingle, or a lifetime dimensional shingle on our roofing systems. We also use a high-performance, high-efficiency HVAC system on every unit. We have some folks that have utility bills less than $100 a month because of how efficient we build our product, which is also lends itself to our two-by-six construction for our vertical walls that are insulated. And that insulation is R19 instead of an R13, which is code. So, that's an example group. All of the building materials that we've proposed are top-notch and as good as it gets in the industry.
Did you say a PVC product?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I thought I heard that.
Yep. It's a closed-cell PVC, waterproof, and is guaranteed for life.
Am I allowed to ask Ed a question right now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Ed, looking at this point scorecard, 18 is the RPD point. Is that correct?
Yes, for a multifamily, the minimum amount of points is 18.
Right now, as it stands, it's nine, potentially 11, based upon discretion of the planning commission.
Correct.
And that's out of 18. And if I'm not mistaken, if you don't mind me, the majority of the garages are front-loaded in this project, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are there any others on the commission wanting to ask Mr. Thurman any questions? Hearing none, we'll ask you to remain close by in case we have questions and need clarification.
Thank you. I've got the neighborhood representatives on the sign-in sheet.
Why don't you announce them?
Okay. We have Steve Hickman from the Hamilton West Estates, 1955 Cathedral Lane. We have Mark Kohler of the Washington Estates at 2247 Mossy Grove, and Butch Carter for Villas of Hamilton West at 1476 Cotswold.
Okay. The first... What was the name of the first? Mr. Hickman?
Yes, sir.
Are you okay? You make common approach.
We're going to get to this one as well.
If you would, again, for the record, give your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. Steve Hickman, 1955 Cathedral Lane in Hamilton.
Steve Hickman, nineteen fifty-five Cathedral Lane in Hamilton. I want to thank the chairman and the committee for holding this and let us, and Mr. Mayor, let us express our opinions of this development. On this development, we've heard many things, how they want to classify their homes. We've heard townhomes tonight by the Redwood representative. We have heard condominium style. Basically, these are apartments. Even if you look at their page, their front page, which I have a copy of, their sign out there says Apartment Neighborhoods. These are apartments. We have three hundred and twenty signed petitions verified that people is against this development. These people, these three hundred and twenty people plus others, have stood by the city in tough times. I myself moved into this city in nineteen eighty. Reason why I did, because the city had a lot to offer. Then we went through tough times with a lot of development industries moving out of the city. Cities coming back. In my opinion, city government is doing a fantastic job renovating downtown, bringing businesses in, bringing development in, restaurants and all these things, and spooky nuke. The development is not fit to where it's going, where they're proposing their development. It's not a good fit for Hamilton, or I should say, the plan of Hamilton. They need eighteen points. They're nine to eleven right now, as the mayor expressed. I don't think it's a good idea for the commission, who wrote the development rules of the plan of Hamilton, to waive these other seven to eight or nine points that they're trying to offer. It sets a bad tone for the city. It is going to put a bad taste in people's mouth that the city turned their back on them. And the city people that's over here in Hamilton West Estates and the Villas of Hamilton West and Washington Estates, this is basically their final homes. They don't want to move. They've invested all their income, all their sweat and everything to build a nice home. We don't need apartments. Any way you shake it down, they're apartments. And to get in these apartments, you need a minimum five hundred and fifty credit score. That's not very much. They do do short term housing, six to fifteen months. You're going to have people coming and going. We do not want another Gordon Smith Boulevard where there is four to five police calls averaged per day. It may look good for a few years. Look at Gordon Smith Boulevard now. It was built in the late seventies, finished up their development in the middle eighties. It's a mess up there. This is something that we don't need in our city. The city has made great strides in development, but bringing in new businesses. Look at Main Street, thriving. We have to thank our city commissioners and city council and our zoning commission for I think if we take this waiver and give them this extra points, it is sending a bad message to our city people that have stayed in the city through the very tough times when the city was just a ghost town. They've invested their heart and soul in these, in their communities. And I just hope that the commission, that the laws and the point system that they instituted for the plan of Hamilton, stand by their word and furthermore, stand by the citizens of the city. We don't need to jump on the first person that turns around and wants to invest development. We can hold out a little bit for residential housing. That's the plan of Hamilton, residential housing, or fifty-five and older communities that could be condos, not condo style, not town home style. I've looked at development. I've took trips to the developments. I'm not running down their product, but they actually look like military barracks, in my opinion. They may start out great, five years, ten years. What are we going to look like in twenty, twenty-five years? Our homes mean a lot to us. We're hoping that the commission stands by their word of the plan of Hamilton that they instituted and don't waiver this section one seventy and one eighty to give them those extra points.
We're going to ask you to, if you're, we're trying to wrap it up.
Okay. All right. That's all I've got to say, and I thank the commission for hearing me out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, sir, we have Mark Kohler of Washington Estates, twenty-two forty-seven Mossy Grove.
Okay. And I'm going to ask you to keep it to five minutes, sir.
Okay. And also try to speak to the mic, try to draw as close to the mouth as possible. I mean, we're getting a couple of comments in Zoom that people are still not able to hear, or we sound muffled.
I'll do my best. Okay. My name is Mark Kahler, twenty-two forty-seven Mossy Grove. Some questions, basic questions that I have, is if there is a loss of property value, okay, to all of us, as we do this, is the city automatically going, and county going to lower our tax rate? Yes, no, or no answer?
We're listening to...
With a development of this size, there will be a lot of heavy equipment go up and down Washington Boulevard. As that's done, who will pay for the damage and repairs on Washington Boulevard? Okay? This shouldn't be a burden on the whole city, let alone just our close residents. With all the construction, you can't help but, there's mud and there's dirt. Who is willing to be responsible for cleaning Washington Boulevard on a regular basis so as we drive through, we don't bring their mud on into our driveways and our garages? The builder who built in our neighborhood cleaned the street virtually every day. Okay. With this going on for, you said, twenty-six months? Is that correct? Building process?
That is yes, we can sign for mine.
Okay. The noise from all of this, because there will be a lot of heavy equipment, what time are they going to start? In the summertime, I don't want work till five o'clock at night either. It's hot. But we also don't want two to two and a half years of a lot of noise in the neighborhood. Okay? Can we restrict the building times from eight AM to four PM? I know that's very difficult, but I think we're fine. As there will be noise barriers, because there will be a lot of heavy equipments, cranes, stuff like that, can we have some noise barriers built on both sides of the street and noise barriers built for the rest of the neighborhood? So the answer to my question is how many units? That's been entered, rental expenses. I'm looking for what amenities. Will there be a pool, clubhouse, playgrounds, tennis courts, anything of this nature? To command the amount of rent that you're asking for, there's a lot of places that do have these. They're not going to do them. How do they really expect the city of Hamilton to get that much money? You're adding a lot of traffic to the intersection of basically Autumn Walk, Lisa Renee, all of this. What about traffic lights? We all know that Washington Estates, Washington Boulevard, in theory is a thirty-five mile an hour road. No, it's not. People come up and through there, they're forty, forty-five miles an hour. Right now, at certain times of the day, police officers go down to the corner of Cleveland and Washington Boulevard to direct traffic because of the traffic backups. Maybe we need some traffic lights there. What about at West Elton? Okay. Yep. You've got problems there. There's accidents there almost once a week. Now we're adding a lot more traffic. We need some lights. Okay? School zone lights. We have some at the very beginning and the very end. Unfortunately, you don't have them. They are before and after entrances into our neighborhoods, although in my neighborhood, I guess I'm one of the youngest ones there. I'm sixty-six years old. We have people in that neighborhood that are ninety-two years old, and they're driving, and they're fantastic. So they know what the school zone is. Are the apartments, maybe we need something to designate and say, hey, guess what? You have now just pulled out into a school zone. You've got ninety-some apartments, two to four cars per apartment. Again, as I said, you wouldn't score a ballgame and say, okay, you won, if you only have eleven points and your opponent has eighteen. It's really not fair to say, we will give you seven points for nothing. They need to come back and say, we're going to do something. Here is the seven points, and we've earned it. Because who's next to come up and say, oh, well, we only have eleven of eighteen points? You gave it to them, you need to give it to us. You've done past practice. Basically, folks, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kahler.
Next, we have Mr. Butch Carter of Villas of Hamilton West, fourteen seventy-six Cotswold.
Do we have two signed up from Villas of Hamilton West?
We have a resident that's there, so they're on the general sheet. This is for, to get the residents, like, one...
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
One representative per adjacent neighborhood.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
I normally don't have trouble projecting, so I just wanted to make sure. Quite a few of the items were covered. I think Mr. Thurman said that you're going to do away with the emergency road that was going to go through our community. Is that correct?
Yes, he did.
Yes, that was part of the submitted revisions we received from Mr. Thurman.
Okay. So that takes care of one of our concerns and one of our issues. The other one is the retention pond. We feel, because we currently experience when it really storms, that retention pond overflows, and it gets very near going into the community. A few years ago, we had that hundred year storm, and it came over Washington Boulevard. We are sure that if we build a development on this eighteen acres, there will definitely be more stored water drained into this retention pond. So we're concerned about that because, first time it happens, it's going to be in our condos. We would prefer, before you grant a variance, that you do a study that proves we will not have a flooding problem. We don't want, do not want you to put the cart before the horse. We want the study before it's built and before you grant a variance. That pretty well takes care of our two concerns. Right now, I'm going to talk about what we know for sure, and I'm going to repeat what two previous speakers said about the eleven points. We know the planning commission uses a point system to judge the merit of variance request. Based on this eighteen point minimum, and I emphasize, this is a minimum, Redwood achieves nine points, eleven points if the planning commission grants the two allowable discretionary points. This results in a seven point deficiency. This means the commission will have to waive forty-eight percent of the required minimum. Redwood has known about this deficiency since the very beginning of their request, and has done absolutely nothing to improve their score. Folks, I don't know about you, but where I come from, sixty-two percent score is failing. You shouldn't ignore or waive, but shouldn't be ignored or waived by the commission. What else do we know? We know that the overwhelming majority of the surrounding community strongly objects to the building of a large rental complex in the middle of our community. We know the city of Hamilton has recently developed and adopted Plan Hamilton, which is a comprehensive plan for establishing a vision for well-designed neighborhoods that will have a positive impact in our communities and promotes community well-being and quality of life. We know, according to this guiding document, Plan Hamilton, our area is considered to be suburban. And I quote from this document, "Any changes of land use or zoning regulation should take into consideration the residential character of the area," unquote. We know that the area surrounding this proposed development is predominantly made up of people who own and live in their homes and condos. These are people who have made a considerable commitment and investment in the community in the city of Hamilton. We know that the planning commission is not requiring a suitable performance bond. Given these unprecedented economic times and the future of possible decline, to continue decline in the economy, a performance bond would assure completion of this project. We know that the L-shaped irregular eighteen acre lot that Redwood wants to develop was created by Welch when he decided to subdivide the lot. We also know that an acceptable plan, and I have it right here in my hand, I almost got it in my hand. Anyway, I have it here, acceptable plan exists for building owner occupied community on this property. It is Welch's responsibility to live with his business decision and to price his property accordingly. It is not the planning commission's responsibility or the people of Hamilton's responsibility to bail him out. We know... We know that homeownership promotes community pride and involvement and stability.
We need to wrap it up, sir.
What's that?
We have a five-minute limit. You've spoken 10.
Homeowners have vested, have a vested interest in their community. They are the folks who participate in PD, PTAs, who volunteered to create the Plan Hamilton document, who serve on this planning commission, who coach Little League. These are the givers, not the takers. We know renters are a lot more transient, which results in lack of incentive to be involved in their community. We are more concerned, they are more concerned about with non-economic benefits and services and of the rental location that rental location can provide. We also know that they frequently can cause additional strain on community resources, such as schools and medical facilities. We know that a renter-heavy community near a homeowner's property, the property becomes harder to sell and can even reduce property value. In closing, and pardon me. In closing, these are the things we know. These are true facts and they are just a few of the very good reasons for voting no on this variance request. Welch, if he chooses to do so, will have lots of other potential buyers. Redwood, if they choose to do so, will have other opportunities to build in Hamilton. But our community won't have a choice. But our community won't have a choice and the very people who already are committed to Hamilton, who have a vested interest in Hamilton and risk their financial community, won't have a choice. Young families won't have a choice. Retirees won't have a choice. And so I say to you commissioners, please, please support the people who support Hamilton and vote no on this request. Thank you for your time and consideration. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Mr. Chair, we can take this in certain directions since we've heard from the neighborhood representatives. Maybe we might want to give Mr. Thurman a chance to reply right now. Or we have three more people that are in person that signed up to speak. It might be prudent to let them speak as well.
Well, go ahead and let them speak. So the commissioners can bring Mr. Thurman back up if necessary.
Okay. Excellent. Jeff O'Donohue, O'Donohue, I hope I pronounced that right. Sorry about that. 1402 Cotswold, I believe that says.
Can I pull this down?
No, sorry.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jeff O'Donohue. I live at 1402 Cotswold Lane in the Villas of Hamilton West.
Let me, let me first interrupt and say for the citizens that are speaking for now, we have a limit to three minutes, sir.
Okay. So please make sure to speak as close to the microphones that we can make sure that people in Zoom and outside can hear us.
Will do. Thank you. My wife Nancy and I have lived in the Villas since 2008 and we live in one of the eight units that directly border the proposed development area. That buffer was one of the reasons that we originally chose a unit back there. We did so though, knowing that at some point that property would be, you know, that property would be developed. I really just wanted to focus on the big picture. Obviously, it's the commission voting whether or not to alter and waive standards that they have established. Obviously, Redwood has made some cosmetic changes and some financial commitments in their proposal. Mr. Thurman has mentioned just a few minutes ago that they have made an effort to do so. All due respect, Mr. Thurman, I don't think it's enough. And any kind of description that you've given these properties and the amenities, as has been stated previously, they're all apartments. Based on, based on Plan Hamilton, we need to have the right partner in that, in that piece of property, in that land. We don't want to put someone in there just because we have an opportunity to do so. I worked at Centos for many years and as a hiring manager, the number one objective was to find the right candidate. Don't go through a list of, a stack of applications and just pick the best person out of there if they're not the right candidate. That's the analogy that I want to, that I want to present to the, to the commission here. You know, the residents of the Villas, the Hamilton West Estates and the Washington Estates, we chose where, where we live because of the standards that have been set by the city. And I guess we in turn expect the, the city and the planning commission to, to do the same thing. You know, again, bottom line is you're trying to, you're trying to determine whether or not to give, to give waivers. When I went to school, 61% was an F. I'll throw that out there. Everybody else has made a comment about that. I, I just don't want the commission to compromise the standards and the goals that the city has already and more recently presented and established in the, in Plan Hamilton. There is, there is the right development out there and there, and there quite possibly is some place for a Redwood development to be established in Hamilton. But I don't think it's in, in between two communities that have done everything they possibly can during the development, the stage of those subdivisions and in the maturation of those developments to maintain the high quality of of appearance and, and standards and value. So that's pretty much, that's pretty, pretty much what I wanted. I'll throw us all out there as well as, I think it speaks volumes that Mr. Welch has not attended any of these meetings as well. That's just my personal opinion. And then just one final comment. If any of the commissioners are or would, would actually, just think in our shoes, if you were a resident of any of these communities, would you want this development in your backyard? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Don.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Certainly. We have Mike Blust of 2053 Bridgeport Drive.
Yes, Mike Blust, 2053 Bridgeport Drive. There are a number of reasons why this shouldn't happen. I only have three minutes. I'm going to just hit on a few of them. One of them is the document I got off the website, future, future land use. It says in several places here, not to do what we're asking you not to do. It's right here. It's your words. Then you got those pesky little RPD points. You got to satisfy 18 of these. In order for you even consider this, they're not even going to come close to this. Then you have hundreds of homeowners out here that is invested in Hamilton. They've invested in a vision of Hamilton. Renters don't do this. Renters are hit and gets. They're stop and goes. These people have done everything that they're supposed to be. What is Redwood's answer to Plan Hamilton? They want you to trash it. They want you to just to waive, waive everything for them. This goes against everything in Plan Hamilton. If it goes any further, Plan Hamilton is nothing more than a lie. This is my third Redwood sales pitch. The very first one I heard, it was like deja vu. I have heard this exact same sales pitch 35 years ago in Mount Washington. We're going to use the best material. We're going to look different than everybody else. Look, you could put an evening gown and lipstick on a duck by the end of the day. Guess what it is? It's still a rental property. These, these rental properties bellied up in Mount Washington. This was a wonderful community. Mount Washington never recovered. He and his company is going to make lots of money out of this. They don't care what's going to happen to them, them, them. They are all in this for the money. Two things always happens when you put a rental property in the middle of a neighborhood. I've seen it many, many times. Property value does suffer despite the fluff and smoke and mirrors that they throw at you. Property crime does go up, theft and damage. I was a placement for five years and I retired after 28 years in the Cincinnati Fire Department. I worked in a lot of communities, a lot of neighborhoods. I saw this happen again and again and again. I'd like to ask the zoning commission, commission something. Mayor, since you're here, sir, I ask you and any council member that might be listening, you build a 300-plus thousand-dollar home. You add thousands more to landscaping and fencing. You do everything that you're supposed to do. Do you want 100 rental units thrown in your front yard? I don't think you would. Well, guess what? Neither do we. If this goes any further, this, this is a slap in the face at every homeowner in Hamilton. It's a sign of total disrespect. I'm almost done. I moved here two years ago from Loveland. I, I retired, my son graduated, went to college. My wife got a job out here. She's from here. She grew up here. Her family's here. I didn't want her driving that far and I was ready for a new adventure. So I said, let's move out that way. I says, I am not moving in Hamilton because a few times I've been out here back in the day. It was a ghost town. But after coming out here and kind of going through things and reading up on stuff and hearing about Spooky Nook, I saw a city reviving itself and I thought that was exciting and wanted to be a part of it. You guys sold me on Plan Hamilton. We bought it. I'm asking you, don't sell us out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blust. Mr. Wilson?
Next, we have Carol, I think it's Bono or Bruno, 1400 North Charleston Court. Sorry about that.
Everybody messes it up. Don't worry. So, okay, Mr. Chair.
Your address, please.
My name is Carol Bono and I live at 1400 North Charleston Court. So I'm over in the Estates area.
Right.
Of the, of the three. Most of the points that I was going to bring up have been brought up. I did want to say that we've just moved into Hamilton three years ago and we built our house. And when we built our house and when we did some improvements on our house down in our basement and so on, nobody gave us any kind of waivers on any of the requirements that we had to do. We had to satisfy the building department, the electric, the plumbing and everything. So nobody gave us any kind of a waiver. We followed the rules and, and we just think that's fair for everybody. And aside from that, one of the things that I'm the most concerned about is Spooky Nook. That's such a big unknown for all of us at this point. We don't know how it's going to affect our neighborhood or, I would assume it's going to, to bring us a lot more business and so on. That would be wonderful if it was good for the neighborhood as well, but it is going to bring us traffic. And so that's such a big unknown that I'm not sure this is the right move at the right time. That's my feeling. So I thank you for your time, but everything else was something that, that I had already heard this evening. So, thank you.
We thank you. Mr. Wilson?
That should be it for the in-person. There's Mr. and Ms. Barb Zellner, but she requested to be a very last speaker if need be. So I believe at this point we could.
Do we have anyone online wishing to speak or do they have anything to say?
We do have somebody.
Emails or chats?
We have somebody that raised their hand in the attendees and I think what we'll do for the Zoom attendees, if you're using it online, raise your hand and we will unmute you one by one. We'll mute you one at a time so that you can ask your question and address the commission. So first we have Dennis and Ruth Metzger.
And did you get people's information at the beginning?
And make sure with the Metzgers, if they're not here for item two.
Oh, okay.
Rather than item one.
Okay. The, the name just disappeared the minute I mentioned it. We do have Armin Block who's next now. Let me unmute him. Mr. Armin Block?
Yes, hi. Thank you, gentlemen.
Please.
For your time and for the work you put in for the city of Hamilton.
Mr. Block? Mr. Block?
Yes.
Please make sure to state your name and address for the record. That'll go for every speaker.
Armin Block and my wife Judith is with me as well today. We're on Zoom. Address is 1740 Tatum Lane in Hamilton. May I proceed?
Yes, you may. You have three minutes, Mr. Block.
Okay, I'll be fine. I just wanted to mention, my wife and I had an opportunity to take a ride over to the city of London this past weekend and take a look at the Redwood real estate developers' project there. I don't know how long that, that project has, has been in existence. It doesn't look like it's too terribly old. But we took a rather extended drive through the, through the property and the first thing that struck us, I'm not sure that the pictures we've seen either online or presented by Mr. Thurman can do justice to the incredible sprawl of density that, that occurs in these developments. I'm assuming that the one for Washington Boulevard is going to be similar. There's row after row of garage doors staring malefully out of the street. The buildings look very nice. However, each one has a two-car garage with it. They're stacked very tightly together and we were struck by the fact that even though there were two-car garages, there weren't at least one and oftentimes two or three vehicles in almost every driveway. It looked like a gigantic used parking lot, but you know, that's, I guess that's just the way people are using the garages. Maybe use it for storage. I don't know. But it struck me that this was not a, a vision that I don't think anyone in Hamilton would particularly care to see anywhere in Hamilton. The density issue here, I don't think we can get away from, even though they're saying they're really going to have only 95 units. That's going to be a lot of units on that small pocket of, of property. Obviously, with the density comes the traffic and it's been touched on before, so I'm not going to belabor your, your, you gentlemen and ladies with, with that feature again, but traffic is going to be an issue, no question about it. Why am I talking about it? Of Tatum Lane, we're not that far away from this and we need to use Washington Boulevard and West Elton Road considerably. Traffic is, is going to be a big issue. To me, has, has been stated before, I think an impact on property values for owner-occupied properties is going to happen as a result of this. And another feature that came to mind when this first became public was the fact that according to the last figures I have seen, Hamilton is currently at 55 to 60% rental versus owner-occupied in Cleveland. And personally, I don't really want to see that percentage go any higher. I'd like to see Hamilton level off with more owner-occupied properties. We've got a lot of absentee landlord-owned properties around the city that I'd like to see turn into owner-occupied. But.
Mr. Block?
Just what, what we saw in London was very impressive as far as the density issue was concerned. That's all I've got to say on the issue. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any others?
We do have Joyce and Randall Thomas that have raised their hand. I've asked them to unmute.
Yes, this is Randall Thomas. Can you hear me?
Yes. And you're, if you speak up just a little bit louder and give your name and address, please?
Yeah, Randall and Joyce Thomas live at 1412 Cotswold. We would be in the northwest corner of the Village of Hamilton West. So we back up to the new project and also back up. So we back up to the new project and also back up to Charlton, the single family street. You know, as I look at this, the two things that Butch brought up as our president of our association was, one, not driving through our community, which the developer has gotten rid of that, which was a deal stop because our private streets can't handle any type of traffic that would be routed through it. Second thing is the pond. And I've seen those things get overloaded and it's not so much that it can't handle at first. If it sills up and it doesn't hold the amount that it retains, it's going to have to be dredged out and whatnot. Now, my background is this. I'm 62 years old. I built over 600 condos in Fairfield.
How much?
Owned it. Four homes in Lubbock County, 600 condos in Hamilton, but back in the 80s. Back in the 80s, there weren't planned unit developments. Thank God we have planned unit developments now. I've sat on both the developer side, the builder side, and now I'm on the owner's side. And I will compliment the company that put their proposal together with the restrictions that they had to do. They put a fairly good product on the line. And they got a great buffer. They've got a four-foot area. They're not townhomes, so they're only eight foot tall to ceiling. I'm six foot two. I'm in a wheelchair, but if I could stand, that means I'd only be looking over the berm by about two foot. And once the bushes and stuff grew, I think the people who live on Charlton and our condos get along well. We really don't bother each other and we wave at each other and we can only see the top two foot of them. But I think they've done a good project. What I don't understand is what Butch was talking about is the traffic is going to be unreal. And they're entitled to get out of the street also. But if there's not to be a traffic light somewhere, because like the school when they're letting out, they do have these on Cleveland Avenue. And we're landlocked at 84 units. Across the street, there's two streets. If you can get into this, but they can't get over to Berkeley to be, Berkeley are locked in, those two need to have a joint road. I don't know where that's at. But there's going to be a traffic light someday or someone's going to have to hire a cop almost every day, especially when schools around. But what I don't understand is a builder and developer is why they're doing public streets. I think they got, the developer has got their hands tied with the public streets. We like our private streets in the villages. And by putting public streets, you've added considerable width to the street, considerable curve, considerable sidewalks in a development like this. I don't want to put sidewalk on one side. Sounds like you're putting on both sides. When you cheat them out of driveway, you're going to force cars to be parked on the street. Somebody's already mentioned that. And that's going to be really ugly. But the product looks as good as you can look as a real project. They've done a nice job with colors. But I fear that that public street is cramped them for what you can't, you have two in the garage, but you can't put two in front of it, it looks like. And, you know, four cars for one place should be plenty. And if they don't have the room to back two up, they're going to be parked in on the street and then their land is covered by them. And my main question is, because I did HUD projects, we did large projects on MacRae. We built probably 400 units on there. They were all HUD-approved. HUD approval is very difficult to get. Are these things going to be planted as one big apartment complex? Or are they going to be planted as condos and there would be each, there'd be 95 condos and a bunch of common area? Or are they going to be land dominiums? Which means you own the land underneath. You know, the way you title it affects the way you want to get rid of it later. And I'd hate to see these turn into a bunch of small condo associations like Gordon Smith Road. That would be the death of everybody.
Okay. We're out of time there. Mr. Thomas, so we thank you for your comments. Mr. Wilson?
I believe, I don't know if we want to address Mr. Thurman, have him come up? Or do we want to move on to some of the ones that have called in via Zoom to give them an opportunity? Not everybody is attending it online. So what I would do, if we are going to address the phone callers, I will unmute each one and call out the phone number and see if they wish to speak or not.
Okay.
If I get no response after a delayed period, I'll move on to the next on the list.
Okay.
Okay, first is 1-256-3374681.
Alabama. Okay.
Do you wish to speak to this matter, this public hearing?
And a reminder, you have to press star six.
If you're on phone and you are going to unmute, plus star six in order to do so. Again, this is 1-256-3374681. No response.
The person with the Alabama phone number wishing to speak?
Let's go ahead to the next one.
Yeah, that's, this is what I mean.
We'll go to the next.
Will we go into the next one then? We have 1-513-3280432. Do you wish to speak to this public hearing? You've been unmuted.
Hit star six if you wish to speak.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, thank you. Welcome to the planning commission meeting. If you wish to speak to this public matter, we will need your name and address for the record.
I do not wish to speak.
Okay, thank you very much for attending.
Okay. We'll move on next. And again, that's, you unmute if you wish to speak to the matter. Pressing star six.
Next, please.
Okay. Next will be 1-740-707-3500. Hearing none, unfortunately. We have one last one. We have somebody that's 927-812-54987.
If you wish to speak, hit star six.
Hearing none, sir.
No, sir. Do we have, was there a quick Q and A chat or something? Someone, let's see, there's one comment, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Oh, no, that's on another item?
Yes, we have somebody from the Arthur Springs that wishes to speak.
If, well, go ahead. If that's all the speakers, we'll have Ms. Barb Zellner to speak?
Yes. Ms. Barb, Ms. Zellner, if you wish to speak now? Thank you.
Barb Zellner, and it's 1358 Cotswold Lane. I'm going to pull my mask down a little bit because my glasses are steaming up. I can't see. I am here, I am president of the HOA at the Villas of Hamilton West, and I am here to represent them and owners in the surrounding neighborhoods. These few weeks have been very stressful for everyone. We never thought that we would be faced with the extra land to be sold as apartment neighborhoods, especially when the for-sale signs on Washington Boulevard states for sale for condos. We appreciate you listening to the homeowners and condo owners, sharing our reasons why we believe that this is not appropriate use for this land in our neighborhoods. Please think about the 225 people that live in these developments that are Hamilton citizens and their life savings are in their homes. We also appreciate the developer's willingness to make concessions. However, it is not his product that we find fault with. It is in the fact that it is an apartment. And we just don't think that's appropriate. But we thank the commission for listening to all of us. We appreciate it being heard. So thank you very much.
Thank you. This is the public hearing. If, Mrs. Thurman, we'll let you have the last word, so to speak, and then we will consider closing the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And if I could ask for your brevity as much as, in fairness, we appreciate you already doing so.
Yes, sir. There's a big divide here. And some of it is zoning law versus perception. Rental units, condominiums, land dominiums are all the same classification. Ownership is not the zoning rule of use. This use is identical to the Villas next door, the 88 units next door. It is an identical use. I want to make that clear because a lot of people don't understand that. A rental, in their mind, is disparaging to their property. We're past that. We've proven that that's not the case, time and time again with reports, case studies, and Harvard analysis. The next thing I want to address, and the last thing really, we met with staff a month before we made application. We were told no thanks several times. So being a little persistent and a little creative, I got the right background to do that, we came up with plans and alternatives and options and ideas to a point where your city manager decided, let's bring it to the table. I like what I'm hearing. I like your proposal. Maybe not in exact that term. I'm paraphrasing it in my favor, but that's why we're here. I was willing to take no if that was the case. And I made that very clear day one when I introduced myself to the staff. We have so many opportunities to upgrade the product. We're asking for the waivers for the credit of that. This community is a curvilinear one-street community. It's not like the community in Lebanon where it's an Oxfordian style, back-to-back yards and gridlock. That's going to look immensely different. We have a park property. We have a green. We have walks. The gentleman asked about the public walk. That was one of the stipulations that the city manager suggested, that that's how we get a street built to the city specifications. We're willing to take over the maintenance of it and keep it off the public works books for maintenance. There's no parking on our streets. We're willing, that's standard throughout a Redwood community, but that's on private streets. But we're willing to put no parking signs up so that there's no parking on our streets. This is a safe neighborhood for grandmas and grandfathers to back out of their garages, onto the streets, and go do their business in the city of Hamilton. So I know that background never gets out. I know it's hard to articulate that. I'm not the greatest at it either. But there's a lot of homework that went into this. It's a beautiful design. It's the same exact use as next door. It's a transitional use from a collector's street, a school, and commercial property across the street. It fits the bill exactly as it's written in Plan Hamilton. I appreciate the interpretation, but I think I'm on the right side of that interpretation. We made application based on a fabulous design and a very nice product to put in our community here. So that's all I have for a follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Thurman. Okay. That is, those are all the people that have signed up to speak?
Mr. Chair, I did put out a chat message, and I'll say it again one more time for the record. If anybody in Zoom online wishes to speak to the public hearing, please raise your hand. And for now, I have been seeing none. I think the final thing that would be prudent would be to offer the same chants of the public one more time, the in-person public, to speak to the public hearing if there are any further comments.
Are there any comments from those here in attendance that have not spoken, that did not sign up? And I would ask that you only speak if you have something to add that's not been addressed prior.
Calling one more time, if there is anybody in person that wishes to address the public hearing, please come up to the podium and do so. Give your name and address.
Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mayor?
I'll make a motion that the public hearing be closed.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mayor Muller to close the public hearing, a second by Commissioner Sandlin. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. Discussion among the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mayor?
I do have real concerns about that point deficiency, as well as concerns about the 1132.43 and the 1118.180 criteria that appears in the staff report. The points are there for a reason, but I have got real concerns about the points as well as the waiver criteria.
Thank you. Anyone else from the commission?
Mr. Chair, it seems like we ran into the same glitch where our commission members were unmuted. And I'm going through to unmute everyone now.
All right. Thank you. One second, Mr. Von Stein. Commissioner Von Stein, we're working on getting you unmuted. If you're on your phone, hit star six. Or maybe mute.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you very much.
Oh, all right. Thank you. I don't have anything to add. I just wanted to be unmuted so I could talk if I had anything. I think my feelings are noted on this situation and I want to leave it at that. I think I do not agree with it. They still have a lot of things they need to meet, requirements, and I just, the citizens have spoke.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Terry Morseley. I also just want to go on record as saying that I respect and appreciate everything that both sides have brought to the table on this. My main concern is the fact that there is such a discrepancy between the required points and, you know, where we're at at this particular point. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Lisa Sandlin. I'd like to go on the record, really with a question. If we're not going to follow the point system, then why do we have the point system to begin with? I think that there was a lot of time and effort and energy put into writing and creating the point system for this city to follow, to make sure that we had specific guidelines. It's very clear what we expect. And so I too want to express that I have great concerns by not meeting that point system.
Thank you. I'll go on the record saying that I have visited their Centerville neighborhood as well as their Lebanon neighborhood. They're good neighborhoods in the right situation, but we're, I personally feel like as chairman and as just, and citizen, that we're setting a precedent here if we grant that large, you know, the two points aren't just given for any reason. They have upgraded and tried to get someone out. I don't know that I mind the two points, but the additional points needed is a real reach. And for that reason, I can't support this. It's pretty cut and dried for me. Any others? We have motions to approve or deny?
This is Commissioner Matthews.
Oh, hi. Yes, Commissioner.
I would like to say that I agree, like back in this town, with the point system, if we start doing that now, we'll set a precedence of, you know, that, you know, that we don't value what we put in place, you know? So I think, you know, we have to stay consistent because that's why we put things in place so we have a better way of doing things, how we do things. So I agree that we have to be consistent on this. And let me say, you know, you have to give somebody, you gotta do it for the other. So I think we need to stay consistent on our point system that we put in place and allow that to continue to be our guideline on how we do things.
Thank you. I think Matt Von Stein was wanting to be unmuted.
I believe I hit that unmute button for him at the ask to unmute button.
Yes, this is Matt Von Stein.
Thank you, Matt.
And I want to make a motion that the planning commission take action and deny the proposal based upon status rationale.
Terry Horsley seconds.
So we have a first by Matt Von Stein to deny, and we have a second by Terry Horsley. Is... So is there any other discussion that needs to be made here? Hearing none. We'll have roll call, please.
Certainly, sir. This is to deny the amendment to the RPD. Sandlin for blue.
Yes.
Horsley?
Yes.
Matthews? Matthews?
Commissioner Matthews, are you unmuted?
Okay, yes, I'm unmuted now.
Okay. Thank you. Your vote to deny?
Yes, I vote to deny.
Thank you.
McAllister?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes, I vote to deny.
Von Stein? Von Stein?
Yeah? Yes.
And Vanderhorst for Smith?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We want to thank Mr. Thurman of Redwood. We know you've put a lot of time and effort and expense trying to bring your product to Hamilton. We would encourage you to consider other sites within the city. This one apparently, in its current form, is not wanting to meet the approval of the commission and believe that the unanimous vote speaks volumes. So... Our next... Anything that needs to be done with this further?
What'll happen, we still do need to have a planning commission action letter that will be furnished to the applicant within the next few working days.
Okay.
And that is again because of the denial of the final plan for Redwood's proposal.
Okay. Very good. The next item on our agenda, we have... And by the way, if you plan to leave, you may do so, but we have two more items to address tonight.
So yes, in summation, the Redwood case is finished. We still do have two other agenda items that we will be moving on to after the other people in person have left and the room is quieted down. So we'll give that a couple of minutes.
Why don't we close the door? Do we have anyone out there for the Arbor Springs?
I think there was a Zoom, wasn't there?
Yeah, there's Eric Bullings on Zoom. The homeowners association. Thank you, Ed.
This gentleman is actually here for our third agenda item, but since the lobby is now crowded, we decided to bring him in for previous.
That's good.
Okay.
So the next item on our agenda is a major amendment to an already approved residential plan development for a new street with cul-de-sac. And that's Arbor Springs Extension. And are you doing that?
Yes, I'm doing that, Mr. Chair. I'll help us out. Thank you again. I'm Ed Wilson. I will be presenting this case on behalf of the Planning Department. This, too, is an amended plan development proposal for 1036 Arbor Springs Drive. The applicant is Craig Rotis, who is also the property owner. Basically, this has already been reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission back in 2018 to allow the subdivision of the vacant undeveloped property as seven detached single-family lots. They're here for a new amended plan because they've replaced the private street or proposing to replace that private street with a public street. So I will get into that presentation. Project proposal, again, is to amend the plan development to allow a public street with a cul-de-sac rather than a private street. But I did want to note and make sure it was clarified, we have been in discussion with the applicant and the property owner that even though this is an amended plan, if approved, it would still require preliminary flats, excuse me, and a final flat per our subdivision regulations in order to divide the land, accept public streets, and accept any easements that are involved with utilities. Staff will continue working with the applicant and their engineer on any future requirements per our interdepartmental review requirements and on next steps in terms of trying to get this project finalized. Okay, you're looking at a location map of 1036 Arbor Springs Drive. It is the second half of what was going to be the Arbor Springs subdivision. Approximately 30 acres of the original development on the site is in question. It's currently undeveloped and vacant land. The plan is for seven single-family lots, and that was approved back in 2018. Current application is for a public street rather than a private drive. Next is the zoning. Again, it's an RPD zone surrounded by several R1 and single-family zones. And as we've discussed in the earlier application, RPD requires the planning commission process and also has a minimum set amount of points due to the fact that they are proposing lots that are much larger in nature, over 100 feet width typically. They have less points needed to achieve. They have eight points they would need to achieve. And per this plan, they are not adjusting any other part of their plan. They're still remaining with the seven single-family lots that are much larger in size than their counterparts. Previous plan, density was reduced from the previous Phase II Arbor Springs, which was going to be more in line with the typical platted subdivision, to now a seven-lot development. Of a hereicular access to all the lots would be provided via Arbor Springs Drive. The materials in question for the proposed houses would be a combination of brick, stone, stucco, nautilus, hardy systems, smart siding, cultured stone and wood, no vinyl. Each lot would utilize a rain garden for drainage and stormwater runoff. The development actually meets the 1118.170, the RPD points, as I mentioned. They needed eight points. They're proposed to achieve those eight points via meeting a minimum lead, which is the leadership and energy efficiency improvement. Exact elevations we provided, they were part of your staff agenda report. Basically, this is what the applicant submitted in 2018 and is still remaining with as part of their proposal. And this is the submitted amendment to the plan that is up for review and consideration by the Planning Commission. The street is approximately 700 feet in length with a cul-de-sac, about 23 feet wide. 60-foot right-of-way is proposed along with that with a... Oh, sorry. Is something wrong, Mr. Chair?
No.
Okay. A 30-foot front building setback or building line is also proposed for both sides of the proposed street. The planned items, again, those seven lots will be connected to City of Hamilton Utilities. A 10-foot utility easement will run along both sides of the proposed cul-de-sac and street. Eight-inch water main will run parallel to the street along the north, and the eight-inch sanitary will run parallel along the street as well. That sanitary would connect eastward to an existing sanitary on Alpine Drive with a proposed 10-foot easement. Next, the homes. Again, as I mentioned, each home would be built to minimum lead certification in order to adhere to the points. There was no indication that this had changed in the applicant's submittal. Each home would have a rain garden to help promote drainage. The rain garden plantings would be able to withstand flood and drought conditions. Rain garden areas and sizes were still yet to be determined, but they're determined based on the size of the house once they get to building houses. Currently, the rain gardens are located behind the housing footprints on the preliminary plan. The applicant's previous plans and claims indicated that minimal impact would be made on the surrounding natural and wooded areas. Again, it's a vast undeveloped lot. There were concerns about disturbance to the existing flora and fauna. In the previous application, the applicant had indicated that there would be minimal disturbance. A lot of this development is happening more north of that property, so it's a bit closer to the existing subdivision, but not too close and not too far away from the southern either. This project has been through interdepartmental review. We did have a few comments and objections from utilities, basically corrections. We will be relaying those to the applicant in question. Fire had no objection. Electric had no objection. Utilities had objections with comments, as did Public Works. We will be forwarding their comments on to the applicant. Our city arborist also had comments about changing the landscaping for a more suitable landscaping and planting plan for the environment. Notification, as part of the public hearing, we mailed owners of 172 properties within 500 feet of the property. Staff did receive three comments as of this report. Ms. Abrams, a resident on Springvale Drive, commented that her main concern was flooding and that it would not take much to cause flooding and erosion in that area. Ms. Carol Walters, a resident of Arbor Springs subdivision, commented that the applicant and future residents should share in the maintenance costs of the common areas since the lots will be accessed via the existing Arbor Springs Drive. So in order to get to 1036 Arbor Springs Drive, they would need to utilize the existing Arbor Springs Drive itself. And that is what Ms. Walters' concern is. Ms. Fossberg of 771 Alpine Drive voiced many concerns, the main one being water runoff. So again, another water drainage concern. Ms. Fossberg also noted that she was not interested in any more homes being built in that area. For the callers, as well as in the public hearing notice, we noted that the plan was already approved for seven single-family detached residential lots, and that it was already approved in 2018. The amendment we're here today for, or here tonight for, is for the street redesign. Motions, the planning commission can either approve or deny the proposed amended plan development and can add or amend any conditions of approval. Either of the following motions could be used. One, in the event of approval, that the planning commission take final action to approve the major plan development amendment to 1036 Arbor Springs RPD, subject to the conditions of approval. And two, denial, that the planning commission take final action to deny the major plan development to 1036 Arbor Springs RPD based on statutes or rationale. Some of those conditions of approval... I'm going to mute all if... Just so we can make sure we have a clear presentation. The conditions of approval include the following. The setbacks for the proposed single-family home-constructed lots on five, six, and seven lots, five, six, and seven, the southern lots, shall meet the minimum required setbacks of the R1 single-family zone. Another thing to note about these conditions of approval, they are the same as the 2018 conditions of approval, just for continuity. There's only one more that's been added on. Number two, the construction drawings for the proposed work, including site engineering plans, shall be revised, subject to any future requirements of our city's interdepartmental review committee. Number three, the lands... Oops. Oh, gracious. Good catch. I will restart with the conditions of approval since mute all also works on the user as well. I do apologize for that. I'll go back to motions, just what the motions are, and then go to the conditions of approval. Motions, if they wish to approve, planning commission can take final action to approve the major plan development for 1036 Arbor Springs RPD, subject to the conditions of approval. Or number two, denial, the planning commission can take final action to deny the major plan development to the 1036 Arbor Springs Drive based upon statutes and/or rationale. The conditions of approval include the following. Number one, the setbacks for the proposed single-family home-constructed lots on lots number five, six, and seven, the southern lots, shall meet the minimum required setbacks of the R1 single-family zone. Number two, the construction drawings for the proposed work, including site engineering plans, shall be revised, subject to any needed requirements of the city interdepartmental review committee. Number three, landscaping, site improvements, and all exterior finishes and other improvements to be installed and maintained in good repair and replaced as necessary to remain in compliance with the approved final development plan. Number four, all proposed landscaping items shall be reviewed and approved by the city arborist. Number five, all landscaping sizes to conform to the minimum size requirements found in the zoning ordinance, Section 1131.70, and reviewed and approved by the municipal arborist as well. Number six, all structures shall meet the minimum lead certification or better as defined under the LEED standard, Leadership in Engineering and Environmental Design Rating System for housing by the United States Green Build Council per the obtained RPD points. So again, we're reiterating that those points need to be achieved. This is the way they wish to do it. We're making it a condition of approval. And conditions one through six are also the same. I mentioned it before, but the people couldn't hear me. The conditions one through six are the same conditions of approval that were approved when this plan was brought before the planning commission back in 2018. So they're being re-added for continuity. Staff comment. Number one, the proposal encourages superior and imaginative design and function in developments through creative use of land, featuring a hilly topography, which can prohibit higher density or more conventional developments. Number two, the development establishes an alternative procedure for the development of land to allow for more efficient and economic development of property than customarily permitted by conventional zoning and subdivision regulations. Number three, the project now proposes a street with a cul-de-sac designed to meet the specifications of our city engineering standards, delivering a better product for the development. Number four, the proposed development properly integrates with the character and form of the surrounding areas and is compatible with the existing development adjacent to the site in question. Number five, the proposed project continues to go through substantial planning and review procedures in order to facilitate a higher quality of design and development. The applicant continues to confer with staff to incorporate comments and be compliant with respect to the city requirements. Number six, the proposed development plan encourages the conservation of natural amenities of the landscape through the creation of larger lots than a more traditional suburban neighborhood. Again, a lot of that development is focused on the northern end of the property, leaving a lot of the southern end, which contains most of the flora and wildlife, leaving that part alone and conserving it. And number seven, the houses and street are proposed for the northern center of the undeveloped lot, being at least 300 feet away from Fairhaven Drive and at least 600 feet away from Springvale Drive. These are the drives located on the eastern side abutting the property, and they are planted subdivisions, zoned R1. So this thing is developed at least 300 feet away from some of the nearer properties. In addition, the location and area of the proposed houses and street can help minimize the impact that would be had against the existing flora on the site. That is it. That is the summation of my report, Mr. Chair. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I believe someone in chat is really trying to get our attention. I'm going to check that out.
Okay. So we had some items in chat. Are all of our commissioners still with us? Can you see them in?
I can see them within the list. I'm gonna start unmuting right now.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, it looks like everybody's unmuted, but still, type, let me know if you're unmuted. We do have... The applicant said that they would attend the meeting. However, I don't... see any sign, I see.
Eric Bowling was.
Were we supposed to maybe call them and let them know and text them when they're, like, I can't remember exactly.
I think he told them within like, an hour to return back, and it's been two.
Well, he was just on here.
We do have Marvin Spradling here. He is also working with the applicants. He had actually contacted me earlier this afternoon to discuss what this plan was and would most likely be speaking, at least to speak on behalf of the matter. Mr. Spradling, you are unmuted. If you would, please, if you wish to speak to this matter, please give your name and address for the record.
This is Marvin Spradling, and I'm hoping I'm doing this correctly, because I'm still learning this.
You are making, we do hear you. Go right ahead with your address, please.
Realistically, I think really what we're trying to do is meet what the council asked us to do the last time we met with you, which was really go to preparing a cul-de-sac and going to public street. Other than that, we have really not changed any of the things that you have already approved prior. So really what we tried to do is meet the other requirements that you requested in the last meeting. So really, at this point, we're just asking for the consideration to continue to move on with this project.
Okay. We appreciate this. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else available that wishes to speak?
We had Eric Bowling, the HOA president of Arbor Springs. Oops, and he's raising his hand right now. Mr. Bowling, I have unmuted you. You should be able to speak at this time. Please give your name and address, though, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Wilson. My name's Eric Bowling, and I am the HOA president for Arbor Springs. And I'm here this evening to represent our phase one of the community. Originally, the 1036 was supposed to be another addition, as we all know. And we're not here this evening to oppose the cul-de-sac at all. What we are here is when they request a motion to change the zoning that is currently as the RPD, to make them a PUD. And we are a homeowners association. So since they are going to be using our entrance to come in and out of the community, we have public areas that all homeowners today have to, you know, pay their dues for, for maintaining the grass mowing, you know, handling. We have two large ponds in the front of the community that we run the fountains in the summer and treat the ponds with chemicals to really keep it to a very nice state. And so all we're asking is of the planning commission this evening, is to make a motion to change the RPD to a PUD and allow them to become a part of our homeowners association, because again, they will be enjoying the, you know, the amenities as they're coming in and out of our community.
Let me, then we appreciate your concern, Mr. Bowling. Let me ask of staff, is it in order for them, for this, these homes, the seven homes, to become part of the HOA, do we have to change it to a PUD?
This is an intriguing question. It would be something.
Alan.
No, I mean.
We don't believe they have to change the structure of their subdivision, making a PUD, Mr. Bowling, for them to join your association. Now, whether we have the right as a quasi-government body or as a government body to require them to become members of the association, it seems that would be between you and them. I don't think that we get involved in the who has to join associations and who does not. We appreciate where you're coming from, but I don't think that's, can be remedied here.
Okay, so then with the, which today we are zoned as a PUD, I believe, if I'm correct.
Your RPD is what, or actually, I was just up the zoning map. I'm going to pull up the zoning map again.
It's already zoned.
It's all RPD. It's all RPD. Yeah.
That we, most places call plan developments, plan unit developments. We call them plan developments. They're the same thing.
So, so there's really not much, there's no real difference in, right now, you are an RPD, according to the staff, Mr. Bowling?
As far as our current HOA covenants is that talk about the phase one and the phase two being a part of the HOA, I'm assuming is what we're asking here, is that we will need to pay offline with the new developer and solicit their input to be a part of the HOA. If not, then I'm assuming we have to take legal action against them utilizing the covenances that were placed before that property was purchased. Would that be, I guess, the correct assumption?
It's starting to look more and more like it is between the private parties. Made something where staff needs to get the two parties in contact with each other. We do, if you would provide me with your contact information, Mr. Bowling, we'd be happy to share it with Mr. Spradling, as well as Mr. Rotis, to at least get that conversation going and to get that two-way going. Does that make sense?
We can't give legal advice.
Yeah, yeah, we don't provide legal advice, so that would be the, to get you guys talking to one another and ironing that out, that would be the appropriate thing offline from our meeting here tonight. But we understand your concern.
Mr. Wilson, I have your email information, so I can email you separately with my contact information, and then we can hopefully make that connection.
Excellent, yes, that'll work perfectly, Mr. Bowling.
I appreciate everyone's time this evening, and thank you for allowing us, or allowing me to speak on behalf of the community.
We thank and we appreciate your patience. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the?
Public hearing.
Cul-de-sac?
Yeah, we have Dennis and Ruth Metzger, they've raised their hand. I'm going to ask them to mute and see if they wish to speak to the matter.
Dr. Metzger, are you able to unmute? Star six.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Very much. I do have a question. Dennis Metzger at 1086 Arbor Springs Drive. We are near the end of the road as it is currently constructed. In 2018, when I attended the conversation of the planning commission about the current situation here with the new properties, I raised a question about a large mound of earth that had been moved out of the leavings of the basement, basement homes, and dumped at the end of the road, essentially. And our conversation with you was that there would be a recommendation to the builder, the new builder, that those hills, large hill, would be modified in some way to represent what it looked like before all of the dumpings from the building digs were started. So I didn't see any addressing of that issue in the conversation here today. My understanding was that that was going to be related back to the builder and that would be addressed. Does anyone have recollection about that conversation?
I remember the, I don't remember what we did. I know that I've been there and I've taken pictures of that big mound of dirt. Do you know, Pastor, if the, if that dirt is on the newer's property, or is it still on, it was right, if I'm not mistaken, it was next door to a home that had just been built.
Okay, that one's been taken care of by the current developer, but the, actually, the first large hill is south of the original road, about the area of where the R is printed on the map. And so all of those leavings were brought right about where that R is.
Okay.
So that does not reflect the original scope of what that property looked like originally. So you'll check back on those photos that you probably have taken. You may see that.
Yeah, no, I did, I was taking it of the, of the house into the street there, across the street from your house. And Pastor Brown's house as well. So we will let us have a conversation with the new developer and see if that is, if that can be addressed.
We're making a note of that, to address the dirt mound issue. Might be prudent just for another site visit, just to check on what's going on.
It may be in the way of the, his, the road may be in the way, maybe in the way of the new road anyway, so.
One other comment, we support 100% the development of the homes. We have a good relationship with the pastor from the Hamilton Christian Center, who is now living in our neighborhood, and we hope to have a good relationship with the new owner of the property and the building. So we're very positive about the interaction with them as they come into our community and looking forward to the completion of the whole project.
Thank you, Dr. Metzger. We appreciate your attendance and your patience.
Thank you, appreciate being here.
Is there anyone else here to speak to this item?
I'm seeing no indication in the chat or Q and A, and none of the attendees have raised their hand.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll make a motion that the public hearing be closed.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Mayor Mueller to close the public hearing, a second by Commissioner Sandler. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Any discussion among the commissioners?
Yes, Tom Vanderhorst would like to make a motion, the planning commission take final action to approve the major plan development amendment to 1036 Arbor Springs RPD, subject to the following conditions.
Larry Horstley seconds.
Thank you. We have a first by Commissioner Vanderhorst and a second by Commissioner Horstley to approve this amendment. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Well, roll call, please.
Certainly, sir. Sandler for blue.
Yes.
Horstley?
Yes.
Matthews? I'm unmuted, and I'm still trying to unmute it.
Yes.
Thank you.
McAllister?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Von Stein?
Yes.
And Vanderhorst for Smith? Okay. That motion carries, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And we will try to make contact with the developer to discuss the other items that were brought forth.
I'll direct this one to Mr. Spradling, since he basically is the de facto representative at this time. Mr. Spradling, the motion was approved, so this amendment was approved. We will be sending you a planning commission action letter within the next few workdays, highlighting that. And I will unmute you, since you have raised your hand. Mr. Spradling, you have been unmuted. If you wish to speak further?
I was just going to say, with the issue of the hill, that will be taken care of. We actually said that back in 18 when we talked to you guys. That all has to go away for our project to look right. So that will be taken care of, just so you guys, if you want to put in your notes tonight, you can.
Okay.
Okay.
So that will be graded out, and it will be put in appropriate, to say, will be within the levels of what it should be in that land.
That would be wonderful. We appreciate your attention to that, that item. And whatever, you and Mr. Bowling, I'm sure, I'm assuming you heard his, the HOA's concern and approach to you. Maybe you can get together and discuss.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not, for the record, that's not something that we are involving ourselves in, okay?
I will also tell you that we're happy to have discussions and see where that goes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the council and everybody else. Thank you very much.
You're most welcome.
You're quite welcome, sir.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Bye.
Okay. Item three, let me find my cheat sheet.
I can introduce this for it.
Go right ahead.
Okay. We are on agenda item three of the planning commission for this evening. It is a public hearing. This is 1930 Fair Grove Avenue, a request for a conditional use approval and variance to building design requirements to operate a self-storage facility with exterior storage of campers, trailers, and RVs at 1930 Fair Grove. The applicant is Mr. Josh Lowenstein, property owner Ellen and Molly Smith, and the staff member that will be handling this will be Mr. Larry Bagford. And I'm going to unmute him, and hopefully it'll succeed on the first try.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, Larry.
Hi, Larry.
Yes, sir, thank you. You may proceed.
I hate to be your grand finale for this lovely evening, so we'll try to get this done as quickly as possible. I know it's been a while. Mr. Josh Lowenstein, representing Kingston Development Group, spinning the application operating self-storage facility at 1930 Fair Grove Avenue. Next slide, please. The property is located in Iowa, I think, basketball zoning district. Self-storage business requires a conditional use approval in this zoning district. It's the property of Reddick. Next slide, please. Property is 5.6 acres. There's an existing 25,540 square foot basement building fronting on Fair Grove Avenue, formerly housed fitness center and fitness, need for fitness. To the north, behind that building, is a large wooded area. Beyond the woods, there's an existing 3100 square foot building that will be reutilized as a storage building as part of this project. Like I said, the last legal use is for furniture store, fitness center. Currently, the building's empty and for sale. Next slide, please. Kingston Development Group proposes converting the existing 25,000 square foot building and the remainder of the 5.6 acres into a self-storage facility. Self-storage facility, the existing building will be used to construct a rental office approximately 200 climate-controlled storage units inside there. Next slide, please. This is the building at the rear that was formerly, basically, a lack of better, a storage shed for the former ODOT marines that was there. Plays our to refurbish that building and move the entry doors to the other side of the building, so the purchase thing here on this photo would be quite a while. Next slide, please. Acres behind the existing building, where the wooded area is, we utilize for RV storage units, conventional drive-up storage units. Next slide, please. Oak storage units and contractor's units. And again, drive-up units, such as here. Next slide, please. This proposed building is a total estimated 55,000, 60,000 square feet, and contain 250 to 300 units. You can see the proposed layout of those units here beyond the building. Next slide, please. The area under the power lines, very rarely property, would be used for outdoor. The area under the power lines, very real, the property would be used for outdoor parking spaces for 24 vehicles, campers, boats, and RVs. See, in this slide here, that's the area along the landscape here, area at the top of this line. Next slide, please. The facade of the existing building will incorporate a storefront display, new doors, updated LED lighting, signage, tonics, paint. On the west side of the building, a ramp we constructed for customer loading and access to the inside of the building with non-partitioned units used inside the building to provide the separate storage units. Next slide, please, Ed. Again, the existing building would be refurbished and reused. Next slide, please, Ed. For other property, the existing parking lot will be repaved and added landscape beds around the existing sidewalk and along the sidewalk frontage. In addition to the sidewalk and curb along the frontage would be repaired where needed to the city standards. Next slide, please, Ed. To the west side of the building and facing Route 4, they would replace the existing wooden fences there with a black aluminum spirit top fence and a vertical pivot lift case. Intro example of fencing. The area at the rear sides of property, the existing fences would be removed and new vinyl, seven foot tall, black vinyl chain link fence would be installed with no part wire. There is currently, at the rear of the property, the side of the roof line would be allowed. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. The proposed self-storage use, we operate by extra space storage. Extra space storage manages over 18,000 stores across country. Zoning will be staffed full-time, 9:00 to 6:00, Monday through Saturday. Customer access will be 6:00 a.m. to 10:00, seven days per week. Access only permitted for storage uses and no other types of activity. The full-time management staff would actively make sure the property is being used according to rules. In addition to staff, several security measures are proposed to monitor the facility. The facility will be gated with access control devices or an intruder access. Next slide. The property is supposed to be developed in two phases. Stage one will include renovation of the existing building fencing, gating the property or construction of two new metal buildings. Phase two would be completed approximately 12 to 18 months from the opening date. Include all the other buildings. Next slide, please. Section 1123, 39.11, Hamilton zoning ordinance regulates a self-storage facility. This Iowa limit is as a conditional use applied. In order to accomplish, develop, project, or suggest, propose, excuse me, the applicant has two requests. One is for the conditional use to allow self-storage with exterior parking, trailers, campers, and RVs and other vehicles. And two is a variance due to personal design requirements banning metal as an external finish material in order to build the new storage buildings with exterior metal as the primary building material. Next slide, please. Section 1155, zoning ordinance allows process requirements review. Section 115530 specifies criteria, nine specific criteria, or considering any condition we support. Yet it has submitted their rationale for those proposals. I am not going to read them all to you. One, I'm losing my voice. Two, I'm sure you all can read them. But we'll take a few seconds for you to read through them. Next slide, please, Ed.
Larry, did you drop off?
No, I'm still here. Next slide. I want to make sure everybody has the chance to read. Maybe we should do it as like Star Wars, the title.
We have the technology.
Next slide. And for section 11763 of zoning ordinance, no variance should be approved without the applicant meeting the four criteria here. Listen to exceptional circumstances, set up a name on this property that require this variance. Preservation of their property rights and they are allowed to have the same or similar rights of other properties within the area. And it's an asset to detriment, meaning that it's not going to be a negative effect on surrounding properties or to the city as a whole. And it's not of such a general nature that we would need to change our zoning ordinance because we're getting variance requirements as well as well as. Again, the applicant has supplied their own rationale for those four items. I will not read them to you, but you can talk to them then, of course. Next. Next slide, please, Ed. And next slide. We did receive comments. We sent notices out to 63 people with 500 feet of the property. We received three email comments and a phone call. The biggest concerns from those calls and again, those emails was buffering the outdoor storage, particularly, they don't really have to see that from Greenwood Avenue and from the preschool next door. They feel that should all be buffered as much as possible. And there was one concern about coyotes in that wooded area and dealing with those in some manner. Other than that, they were really neutral on the actual facility. One gentleman who I spoke with by phone was like the idea because he foresees more development on the other vacant properties on Route 4 that may need that type of storage. We also had all the interdepartmental review. The only comments we got back were from our public works department concerned about working with them to deal with drainage from the property and so forth before they're filed. Again, if this conditional use is approved, and staff recommends following conditions, I will again not read those to you.
Why don't we have Ed, if you would read those, since we're in a public hearing and we would like everyone to.
To hear them and make sure that they're on the record? Certainly, sir. Be happy to. All right. The conditions of approval pertaining to this conditional use application include the following. Number one, and again, if anybody cannot hear us on Zoom, please let us know within the chat function. Just getting that one out there, just in case. Conditions of approval include the following. One, the building fronting on Fair Grove Avenue shall be compliant with the commercial design standards set forth in section 1111 of the Hamilton zoning ordinance. Number two, all future signage, permanent or temporary onsite shall comply with the regulations of the Hamilton zoning ordinance or sign ordinance. Number three, the applicant will work with the City of Hamilton, the Department of Engineering to ensure stormwater management is dealt with onsite. Number four, all self-storage mini warehouse rental agreements shall include clauses prohibiting the storage of flammable liquids, highly combustible, or explosive materials, or hazardous chemicals. Number five, copies of the master lease form, which contains the language prohibiting these uses, must be submitted with the final plan. All parking and drive aisles will be parked on an asphalt or concrete surface. Number six, all approved site improvements to landscaping, fencing, paving, and parking will be completed before the business begins operation. Number seven, the following landscape improvements will take place on the site. Item A, there shall be a seven-foot wide landscape area or wider between the front parking lot and the public sidewalk. It shall include no less than three trees, six bushes, and six perennials. Item B, four trees and six shrubs shall be planted between the new storefront and the parking lot. Item C, there will be a 15-foot landscape setback around the exterior of the fence enclosing the rear of the site where it abuts the north and the east property lines. Item D, the applicant will plant a minimum of three different varieties of evergreen trees in a corresponding number of three trees per, three shrubs per tree, or six perennials per tree. Item E, a three-foot high mound with a three-foot flat top shall run the length of the required 15-foot setback and the evergreen trees will be planted atop it. Item F, there will be a minimum 10-foot landscape buffer inside or outside if that portion of the fence is replaced on the west, on the west property line. This area will serve to screen the exterior storage from surrounding properties. Item G, in the areas that the trees currently exist, the existing trees may be maintained as part of the buffer. Item H, evergreen trees will be a minimum of six feet in height when planted. Deciduous trees will be a minimum of two inches in diameter at four feet above the ground when planted. Item I, all landscape buffers at the rear and sides of the property shall be landscaped with a minimum of one tree every 30 linear feet or portion thereof. Item J, applicant will work with a landscape architect to develop a full landscaping and buffer plan to be approved by the city municipal arborist. Number eight, all landscaping, site improvements, exterior finishes, and other improvements shall be installed and maintained in good repair prior to occupying the property and replaced as necessary to remain in compliance with the relevant City of Hamilton codes. Number nine, all vehicles stored on the property outside any building will be parked in an orderly fashion and there will be a clear circulation path that allows for safe movement of vehicles. Number 10, there will be no parking of, loading, or unloading of trucks or trailers in the parking lot in front of 1930 Fair Grove Avenue. Number 11, no materials can be stored outside, including, but not limited to, junk, inoperable, and unlicensed vehicles and vehicle parts slash tires. Number 12, all exterior lighting shall be directed to shine only on the property and shall not exceed one-foot candle when measured at the property line. Number 13, no activities other than rental of storage units and pickup and deposit of dead storage shall be allowed on the premises. Number 14, all brush and all the other trash shall be removed from the property prior to occupancy. Number 15, trash slash recycling containers shall be kept behind the principal structure inside an opaque fence with a minimum height of six feet. Number 16, there will be no access to the rear of the property from Greenwood Avenue or the Greenwood Avenue alley. Number 17, any damaged sidewalk and curb that abuts this property along Fair Grove Avenue will be repaired and replaced to City of Hamilton requirements. Number 18, a pedestrian connection slash crosswalk shall be provided from the Fair Grove Avenue public sidewalk to the primary entry for the building. Number 19, if at any time these and any other conditions of approval are not maintained in compliance, a notice of violation will be sent to the applicant of record, providing 30 days to achieve compliance or be subject to the penalties listed in section 1186 of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Ed. If you want, I can take off some music. Take a drink of water.
Certainly.
Fantastic dish, by the way. The planning department has provided the following motions, to which the planning commission may choose or propose another. Number one, the planning commission recommends the city council approves the conditional use application for a self-storage facility with a variance weighting the applicable commercial design standard requirements, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Or number two, the planning commission recommends the city council approves the conditional use application for the self-storage facility, but denies the variance weighting the applicable commercial design standard requirements, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Or the planning commission recommends that city council deny the conditional use request for the self-storage facility altogether. Are there any questions, myself?
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Larry some rapid-fire questions here?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Will a gate encircle the entire facility?
The fence will encircle the entire facility.
How high is that going to be?
The fence along the back, I believe, is seven feet. And I believe the, that spirit top fence at the front is probably six or seven feet. That's generally the height.
Okay. It appears to me that that exterior storage will be screened from the street? I mean, so you couldn't really see the exterior storage, or did I hear that wrong?
You will, I would think you'll probably be able to see the one building that kind of runs along the side of the existing building.
Okay.
You'll roll back to one of the footprints laid out of the property.
And this kind of curious for the exterior storage will be able to be seen real clearly by the street?
Oh, I'm sorry, the exterior storage.
Right.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant the buildings. The exterior storage would be very, the very rear of the property.
Okay. And that's for the screening? There'll be some kind of screen there, that looks like, right?
Looked like that.
Right, that's why we, that's where we want the 15-foot setback with the three-foot high mound and evergreen trees, a minimum of six feet high. At planning, they'll come, that'll start at 19. Within a few years, it should be well over 10 to 12 feet. And again, maintaining it if there are problems in those trees.
Lastly, this is all paved, no gravel?
No gravel, everything is to be paved.
Okay.
For the conditions.
All right. All I got.
Larry, I had a question for the existing building.
Yes.
They are going to reclaim that and use it?
Yes, I believe the idea is to refurbish the exterior with similar siding as they have on the new buildings, but change the doors that now face towards the Greenwood Avenue alley. Would move the doors to that building on the interior where the other.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I mentioned, I did read that. So that'd be four or five big, like 40 feet deep?
Yes.
Is this the, maybe, maybe we should hear from the owner or his developer?
I believe Mr. Lowenstein is here.
Yeah, I think he is too. And I may have some questions of him. Does this conclude your presentation, Larry?
Yes, it does.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Bagford from the commissioners? Larry, we ask that you maintain the line, please.
Oh, I will.
Okay.
We have Mr. Lowenstein in the attendees. I've actually unmuted Mr. Lowenstein and have asked him to unmute.
Okay.
Mr. Lowenstein, do you have any further comments for this public hearing?
Thank you.
Oh, he's behind. Come to the podium, if you don't mind, Mr. Lowenstein.
Yes, sir.
Who's that?
Yeah.
That, Ms. Thurman? Right there?
No, I'm telling you, who is on the?
Yeah.
There's somebody on Zoom saying that they're low.
Oh, let's see here. Oh, let's see here. Can we tell who that is? I thought I saw Mr. Lowenstein on here, too.
He's here in person.
I'm guessing that could have been a family member.
Go ahead. Mr. Lowenstein, uh-
What's your name and address?
Go ahead and, uh, give your name and address, if you would.
Josh Lowenstein, I'm the, uh, proposed developer of the storage facility at nineteen thirty Fair Grove.
Thank you. And your- your working address, or?
Uh, working address is, uh, Cincinnati, Ohio. Oh, uh, three-six-one-six Marburg Avenue, Cincinnati, Ohio.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any remarks to add to what Mr. Bagford, uh, went over, please?
Sure. You know, we look at this as being able to revitalize a building that's been vacant and declining in appearance for some time. Uh, we think it'll be a- a great use for the community in that it will be a- a quiet, noise-free, um, pollution-free business, uh, that will blend in on Route Four and that it will not put any burden on the road. Uh, we can improve the appearance of the building, um, in that it will benefit both the community residents and small businesses alike. We also feel like we can, um, appropriately buffer the back of the property with evergreen trees and shrubs and appropriately screen, um, the backside of the property along with the east side to give this both the school and the residents behind us the, uh, the comfort and, um, uh, safeguard that they need to know that they're not going to see an eyesore every day when they, you know, go to and from work and, um, come in and out of the neighborhood.
How many units are there in the, on the out- the use- to drive up storage units? How many are there proposed?
Um, it will be anywhere between two-fifty and three-hundred, somewhere in there. Um, we propose to do it in two phases so we can do our first phase, kind of gauge our demand from the surrounding community of which unit types are- are best suited to be expanded.
They're per- they're permanent structures?
Yes, sir.
They're not the kind that they bring in with the forklift and set down and tie down and?
No, they- they're, uh, it's all light-gauge metal framing, um, with, you know, permanent partitions inside, uh, that are sitting on concrete footings.
Okay, is there- is there any concrete on the corners or the ends, or can there be on, like, the side that's going to face the- the back end, or? I can't- you talk about noise-free, and I can't imagine those doors going up and down without making some noise at possibly six AM in the morning. You know, that- that's a concern that I would have if I were a neighbor, uh, to the development.
Okay.
I know that's a hundred feet away, maybe, but, you know?
Yeah, I think we'll probably be more like two-hundred feet away, um, I think, but, you know, also, our access is very infrequent. We find that on our facilities, we have seven-hundred units on average, and we deal with maybe six to ten customers a day. What we find on statistics through our industry that the access is pretty infrequent, so we think it'll be a, um, a low occurrence that that type of activity does take place and would be at a disturbing level.
Okay. So we'll kind of be informal here. Commissioners, uh, there's no one else partici- that has notified us that they wish to participate, or is there someone there, Ed?
I'm going to unmute the only phone call listener here and see if they wish to speak. Um, this is for one-five-one-three-eight-six-eight-zero-four-one-two. If you wish to speak to this conditional use public hearing for nineteen thirty Fair Grove, you've been unmuted. Oh, and press star six in order to unmute yourself.
Yes, I do.
Okay, uh, if you would give your name and address, Mr. Lowenstein, if I- if you'll stay with us here, um, go right ahead, ma'am.
Uh, my name is Jean Eads. I live at seventeen thirteen Helen Avenue. My concern is just what the view will be from Greenwood Avenue and why the front of the property, you're suggesting a really nice fencing, but the back, you're going to put in chain-link fence, why can't the back have that kind of fencing? And you're talking about forty-five-foot motorhomes, which to me is almost like a bus. The- the buffer for this would have to be kind of high to hide this kind of storage, RVs, and are these going to be RVs that people are going to park in there and they're never going to move, and they're going to start to turn black, get green on them, get rundown looking? My- my- my big concern is it's becoming an eyesore from Greenwood Avenue with the outdoor storage. The other part of it I'm not too concerned about is just the outdoor storage. How many, how big, and how long is one vehicle going to be allowed to just be sitting there and never moved? That's my big concern.
Okay, well, I'll ask Mr. Lowenstein to address it for you.
To- to start with the... Uh, the number of spaces, there would be approximately twenty-four spaces. We don't have a strict type of vehicle that could be parked there. It could be a- a Class A motorhome, like you said, that are fairly large. It could be a smaller camper or a, uh, a boat or something of that sort that, um, that may be twenty feet in length. We feel that the- the buffer on the back with the three-foot berm along with six-foot evergreen trees, um, along with the shrubs will pretty quickly, uh, grow to a height and fill in the, uh, the gaps that'll, um, completely screen those vehicles. It would also like to bring up that that facility- area back there has been- had truck trailers and, uh, it's kind of been used as a, uh, mix of a construction yard and truck rigging facility for twenty years, so we feel like we're making substantial improvements, uh, to the property as it sits right now.
Yes, I've lived in this neighborhood all my life. I know what it has looked like. And that's why my concern is, in the front of the building, you're going to be putting this really nice fencing, and in the back, you're putting chain-link fence. Why can't you put that kind of nice fencing in the back instead of chain-link fence? And I would like to see a limit put on how many outside and the size, because I'm- I'm sorry, a forty-five-foot motorhome is the size of a bus. And I just can see the outside storage becoming an eyesore, because I've been by other storage units, places like this, that has outside- outside storage, and you just see a mix-match and just things that have been sitting there that has never been moved. I- I just want to know why you can't put that nice-looking fence all the way around your property and not just in the front. This is a residential neighborhood. We will look at this twenty-four-seven. The front of it is not. That's just going to be people going up and down the street, but we have to look at this seven days a week. So let's make the back look as nice as the front. Let's not just make the back any other way and make the front look nice, because you're one customer, but we have to look at it all the time. So let's make the back look as nice as the front. And actually, you said a three- or four-foot buffer, that's not really too much when you have a big motorhome that's forty-five feet. That's- that's not going to cover it too much. And it takes a long time for trees and bushes and all that stuff to grow. That's just my concern, to make the back look as nice as the front.
And Mrs. Eads, what, uh, you're probably, if you've looked at the mailing, et cetera, the fencing is not around on, um, oh, what's the other street that we- Neil, it's not on Neil Boulevard. That- that fencing, it has nothing to do with that. This is inside the- that fence, um, going along the backside of just this property. It doesn't include-
Yeah.
I'm sure you're probably familiar. I'm just pointing that out to you. So it's- it's not surrounding the- the property that we had before us not too long ago.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time understanding you.
Well, you know, the- the- the alley, um, way behind the- the homes that are by- by the garage back there, you know, there's not going to enclose that. It's just the straight line from, uh, inside, probably, um, where the canal was, it's not going to be all the way up against the alley.
I think the- I think the property will start about sixty feet south of the alley, correct?
Is there an easement or anything through there, Ed?
I think we weren't able to determine the exact.
It's- it's- it's owned by, we were- we- they didn't fully complete the, um, title work on it, but they own it. It- there's- it's not canal land anymore.
That's a Smiths?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't- I didn't know if there was an easement that in- in part of that area. I was- that was a question I had.
It's private property now.
Okay. But, uh, this will be inside the fence that's already there by Goodways, Mrs. Eads. Just- I just wanted to point that out, probably sixty- sixty feet inside the chain-link fence around current, um, uh, fencing that you have up. Uh, do you want to address the- your- your willingness or lack thereof to put a- the spirit-top fence in on the backside?
Uh, sure. I guess my understanding was that fence would sit behind the fifteen-foot landscape buffer and the berm that the trees will sit on top of. So I guess the intent is to hide the- that- that fence will be hidden.
Okay.
At this time, I don't think there's any necessary reason to upgrade that fence.
And the fence is going to be coated?
Yes, sir.
The black coating?
Ed, can you unmute Larry?
I'm trying to unmute Larry.
Thank you, Ed. Dale is correct, Mr. McCallister is correct, that this fence will be inside, um, the existing chain-link fence that runs down the alley there. Uh, this will be probably forty, fifty beyond that. And again, the idea is to put the chain-link, the new chain-link fence will be inside the landscape buffer, so what you would see on the outside, uh, specifically is why we want it, is the landscape buffer not only helping to screen the buildings inside the fence, but also to screen the fence itself.
Okay, I just- I'm just- don't want this to become an eyesore. Thank you. That's my big concern.
Thank you, Mrs. Eads. We- we have taken that into consideration.
I'm going to have to mute all again. Also, it should be set where the panelists should be able to unmute themselves, but if not, you can still tell me, please unmute me, so.
Yeah, what I think, um, Mr. Vanderhorst mentioned was, as soon as you do an unmute all or unmute all, once they mute themselves, again, then you need- it's a two-way.
Larry, we're here. Ms. Lowenstein, is there anything you would like to add to the presentation?
Oh, you're- you're muted. You're muted now.
I don't hear anything either.
Well, we hear you.
Ed, we can't hear you, Terry's- Terry Horstley says.
We're unmuted now, I believe.
There we go.
There we go. There- where's- nothing's really been discussed, uh, uh, since you apparently got muted. Mr. Lowenstein does not have anything else. Uh, is there anyone else in the group that would like to speak to this item? Those attendees, uh, there's no one else here to speak to this, so we're- we'll- we'll go to, uh, Zoom or chat or whatever else we're in.
I'll- I'll even ask verbally one more time if there is anybody that's attending in the attendees section of Zoom. If you wish to address this public hearing, please either raise your hand or type in chat.
Mr. Lowenstein, the fence, the gate that is to go up, um, how high does that go to, because you're going to be letting in buses, possibly, you know, RVs, you know, these travel buses, et cetera?
Yeah, um, we've just found that those gates tend to be more reliable over time than the slide gates, uh, that sits on a, uh, an operator, like a four-by-four operator, and it has an arm that goes up like that.
Oh, you mean, it's just a- oh, I'm trying to think of a- a- the gate.
Yeah.
The fence is closed and I'm- I'm try- I was trying to see if the spirit-top fence going up in a-
Yeah.
Like, going up like on a- a home, uh, on a rail that goes up and I've- okay, you just have a- a parking lot gate.
We do have another participant that does want to speak, Butler County Fair. I am turning them to allow to talk and asking them to unmute.
Butler County Fair?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, ma'am. Go right ahead. Your name and address to the record, please.
Oh, Chris Turner. I work at the Fairgrounds, and my address is thirty-four fifty East Taylor Chorow, Hamilton, four five oh one one.
Thank you.
And I just wondered if you could go back a couple slides to show the overlay. Uh, I'd like to take a picture of it with my phone, because we'll have questions from across the- maybe that one. I don't have a video of that for some reason.
We'll wait for you.
We can- we can send you the presentation, or the planners themselves, if you have all this in, if that would be easier?
That would be great, and I'd be like the, uh, it looks really nice from the front as opposed to what we're used to. And I just wonder, are you having, uh, it looked like on one of the pictures, there was a roof over the exterior, their outdoor storage, is there or no?
On the left-hand side, that has a roof over it, right?
Yes, sir.
Is that an exterior storage? Is that for buses and RVs or whatever? We had a- there was one with a tall canopy.
Yeah, that would be one of the- in the middle, um, that runs, particularly to the one on the far left.
What's one on the far left, uh?
So it's going to be screened by other buildings if it's in the middle?
Yes.
Can you point to it on that image?
Scroll back, Ed, to the actual buildings.
That one?
This type of building.
Are you having that roof with no sides, like for your outdoor storage, for your RVs and boats?
That would not be part of the outdoor storage under the power line area, no. That would be-
Oh, you're doing that because you can't have anything under the power lines, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Then there won't be any of that there?
Yeah, on the very back, uh, there will not- there will not be, because of the power lines, uh, there's restriction.
All right, so that will just be parked completely outside?
Yeah, they will be strictly uncovered. Use of space, I take it you'll have it marked and they have to be in- in a particular area, so it's not going to be-
Yeah, we'll have-
Things parked everywhere.
Yeah, the spaces will be striped, numbered, and- Yeah, the spaces will be striped, numbered, and we'll our managers walk the site daily and just check to make sure things are in good order.
Will you have any indoor boat camper storage or will it all be outside?
No, we plan to have a diverse offering of fully enclosed canopy and then the 24 outdoor parking spaces.
Do you have any indoor more spaces you have that will be big enough for boats and RVs?
It's just an estimate, but looking at maybe 40 to 50.
Okay, do you have current pricing on any of that, like at your other facilities? We I the reason I'm asking is we do winter boat and camper storage right across the street at the fairgrounds in our barns for off season income. And I was just curious, is that we have hefty amount of competition for us?
No, I do not have boat and RV storage at my other two facilities. I only have nearby competitors rates that, you know, that we've looked at and taken into our analysis.
I guess the hourly concern is we have 60 spaces that we rent currently, and that would maybe be a financial hardship for us for you to do that. Just curious.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Lowenstein, please?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that Mr. Lowenstein, you've got a neighborhood behind you, and you got the fairgrounds and Route 4 in front of you, 19 conditions. So we want this place to if this passes to to look good and care about your neighbors behind you and what you got going on in front of you. Okay, that's all I got.
Any of the commissioners have anything? I believe has everyone spoken, Ed, that show say want to speak?
Again, one more time, if there's anybody else that hasn't spoken to this matter, please raise your hand or type a message in the chat.
I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing.
And we have second by Terry Horsley?
Yeah, second.
Thank you. All in favor of closing the public hearing, sitting at five is saying aye.
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 All opposed, hearing none, public hearing is now closed. Thank you, Mr. Lowenstein. We'll call you up if we have anything else. Concerns or comments by the commissioners?
You deal with some topater words. I had concerns about the outdoor storage with the rest of the project. I feel like I can support the the concerns with the screening for the neighborhood in the back and now with the street view. And took a look at it, and it is very close, and I don't know what the lady's name was that spoke before, but I can really see those motorhomes and all that. Being very difficult to screen, and even if you look on street view now, there's a semi back there. And and once the development happens and those trees are taken, I think the sightlines are going to become that much more clear. That coupled fact that, you know, the service is available right across the street, kind of having difficulties supporting that part of the other parts of the project that I'm buying with.
Okay, I I have, you know, I understand the reasoning. I was doing that that was one of my questions was I forgot about the power lines and their inability to that's an easement. They'd have to can't build under it. So it looks like it's a way to generate some additional income, but at what price of the neighbors. And and going all the way down to the school, that part, I don't support as well, Tom. The rest of it, and if you enclose close that building and move the doors inside, I don't I don't have an issue. But the the RV boat, whatever parking, you know, gas grills, I don't know what all could go in there, so.
I think I think it's going to be very difficult to mitigate the impact of the neighborhood behind that. And that's my biggest concern.
Okay, duly noted. We can amend if if we get that far with the with an approval, that portion can be amended, I would think. Mr. Wilson, Mr. Bagford, is Mrs. Hayden?
Amending out the but the rear boat and RV parking as a part.
Yeah, I I would still call for the berm because you've got, you know, if we're allowing the metal buildings, the metal facades, if we allow that variance, I would still want that to be, you know, the berm and the trees and the shrubs, I would still want it to be there.
Planning Commission does have the power to amend any conditions of approval, which does include the overall conditional use itself.
Okay, that's my opinion. I'm one of several here. So does anyone else have a question or concern?
Or a solution, I guess.
Or yeah, or or a solution.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Matt Mossen?
Yes, Matt.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of this. It was about a couple months ago that we denied a storage unit to be moved into P's facility right there on Route 4, a couple miles down from this. And I don't think it would be fair to them to know the boat there is down and then approve this one when it's only a couple miles away. And I I see this as bringing one full time job, a couple of part time jobs to Hamilton. I know this building has sat vacant for years, but I do believe with this book coming that there are greater things to come and that this this building will be get will be put to greater use than it is right now. I I I just don't think so storage is the way to get along, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Any other concerns of the commissioners, solutions? I'm not I'm not sure that, well, I won't get the cart before the horse. Because city council, city this has to go before a city council and and they can change their mind for us or change our mind for us if if they still wanted to go there, if we turn it down. So but I understand your concerns. Are there any others? Does anyone want to venture a motion for greater discussion? Or for approval or deny?
I'd go back to the the street view. And then the slide that they're proposing.
It won't look much difference except for a fence. That's not is that what the exterior is proposing?
Is that what the proposal is?
Is going to look like that? Man, I wish you'd get aside by side of that, but it's okay.
Of the existing.
You don't have a building, they're on the left hand side of the building here. Is that another building that you're proposing or is that another building?
That leaf represents the drive through, Mr. McAllister, the drive you can carry out and try to explore.
Oh, okay.
You see it's outside of the fence.
Oh, I'm thinking when you said drive, I was thinking old hides. I think that's going down the leaf. Okay, all right, so that's that's not their building at all. Okay. Because in the drawings, I'd seen other wrong buildings beside theirs, and I know that isn't their property.
So I just I'm going to make a comment. So this is the street view, which I think as a designer is quite attractive. It's going to this is going to block off the storage buildings behind it from the street view. You're not going to see a lot of that. We're going to have decorative fencing. They're meeting all the criteria for the landscaping, which you can see on this image. So if the issue that everybody has is the outdoor parking on the backside of this along Greenwood, correct? Is it possible to make a proposal that we approve this part with an amendment that the outside storage not be there?
I think you can make whatever motion would be, you know, that you would want to make, and then we'll have discussion.
So I have another question.
Okay.
If I make that proposal, is there a way that once the berm is built and the the short the green space in the back is fulfilled, that you could revisit, could they they come back with another application to add the outdoor storage as long as they could prove that it would be out of sight of the Greenwood that that, you know, is that something that we can that is an option for them? Yes.
Yes, Larry. Larry, go ahead.
If the motion is if your motion is to not allow external parking of equipment at this time, they would have to wait at least a year before they come back and try to amend the approval.
Yes, that's how if it's the same proposal, if it's different, that they could propose a different one or I we have to ask legal counsel if they make a motion to the effect that they can come back.
Early on the line still?
After it's installed, it's possible legal counsel would say that's acceptable. I don't know.
We have we have legal on the phone.
Yes, we do. We have Carly Sherman from Frost Mount Todd on the line still.
Did you unmute her?
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Carly. We appreciate you being there.
Yeah, of course. So I I don't personally, from a legal perspective, have a problem with them coming back.
It's just a matter of timing.
Yeah, I mean, then they'd be a little bit stressed with the one year timing requirement, but they could come back legally.
Okay. And they might have something else they want to do, they could still come back. Okay, thank you very much. So that answer your question?
So that being said, I would like to make a motion that we approve this conditional use for this extra space storage with the condition that the exterior storage be eliminated at this time.
Okay, and by saying that, you mean under the power lines?
Yeah, the exterior parking along the back.
Yes, the uncovered the uncovered parking.
Yeah, under the power lines.
Yeah.
Which seems to be what is the most objectional piece, right?
Yeah, well, to us probably. We so we have a motion to approve the conditional use without approving the external storage on the backside, those 24 spaces without external storage there.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have first and a second. Do we have any further discussion? I have I have a question. Would anybody mind if I ask Mr. Lowenstein a question? Mr. Lowenstein, will you is this property you're owning or you're just developing it for someone else?
No, sir, we're developing it to own it.
Okay, so you will own and operate?
Yes. Well, so we own it, we contract with extra space storage to manage the day to day.
Okay.
We oversee them.
Okay, no, that's so so you have skin in the game then?
Absolutely.
Okay. That was this my itch I had to scratch, I'm sorry, people. So and, you know, I like local ownership, you know, and and involvement, not somebody in Kenke Key trying to manage something from from there. So, okay, so we have first and a second. Is there any discussion, any further discussion on this proposal or on this motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Terry Horsley?
Yes.
I think it's okay, it's acceptable. I'd like to hear Mr. Lowenstein's opinion on this proposal before I vote. Is I mean, we really haven't, is this something that he would be interested in?
Okay. Mr. Lowenstein?
I think potentially it's something that we would still pursue. I can't say with 100% certainty. We'd need to look at the the impacts of the the lost revenue. But it, you know, certainly seems like it could be manageable to to do it without that portion at this time.
Thank you.
There's a question, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes, Mr. Mike.
If that motion is approved, this goes to city council then, correct?
It does.
Is that accurate? I think I read that.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I just like the conditional use of the indoor storage on area.
Yeah, yes, it would go on the city council.
Okay.
Thank you, Larry.
So if I could just interject, sorry.
Yes, Carla.
I'm not sure Mr. Lowenstein might want us or want planning commission to table this to let him decide if it makes sense for their business to have this conditional use and then wait another year and potentially have to come back. We might want to ask him that. Just allow a little bit of time to consider and maybe we could table it until the next planning commission meeting.
Okay, we will ask his opinion. If if we were to table it, we withdraw your motions. I think you'd have to withdraw the motions in the second to table this or not. Carla, can you answer that?
Yes.
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 Mr. Lowenstein, would or say it again, I'm sorry, is Lowenstein?
Lowenstein.
Lowenstein, okay. Would you want us to table it or approve it without the back storage? Knowing that we may you won't we might not have a full blown thing again, but we want would we have to do the mailings again?
We would not. Just need to make sure it's been tabled to a definitive planning commission meeting at time and date.
Okay. So we 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 could approve or deny this motion, but what would you have us do? Do you have others you have to consult with, what you plan to to do, investors or whatever?
I do. I guess my question would be if we have. I do, I guess my question would be if we have an alternative that we would like to propose that would be done at that time, or?
If you, if you wish to present a, a change plan, then you would want to table it, and we'd bring you back to the next meeting, or whatever you got an altered plan together to submit.
But if it's changed plan, we'd have to, we'd have to re.
If it's, Ms. Sherman, if it's a changed, substantially changed plan, they don't have to wait a year, correct?
Right.
So, there's no.
But what I'm thinking is, the 500 feet, there might have to be another mailing if it's substantially changed.
Right, yes.
Yes, it would, but that's not.
That's neither, yeah, it's not a big, not a big issue. It just, I'm thinking of holidays and our next meeting, because first Thursday of the year, and so it might not be the next meeting, given the holidays and all.
It would depend on how quickly Mr. Lowenstein can come back with a, a different plan, and how quick, and once we got that, we would have to send out the notices, and I believe there, is it 10 days or two weeks in?
It's typically 10, it's 10 days for a Planning Commission notice for conditional use.
And then mailing time?
Yeah, plus mailing time. So, we do also want to make sure we bake in a couple, at, at least a few days, especially with the holidays and with how things are, especially in 2020.
So, let's say it's the second meeting, the second Thursday of January. Would that be a deal breaker for you, Mr. Lowenstein?
Um.
Or maybe give you opportunity to, to rework anything, I don't know what you can do there, but.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I'm thinking is we could come back with a different, a higher berm and, you know, a more robust screening plan for that backside. But I'm not sure by the sound of it if that is a material change and something that would be acceptable.
Well, Ms. Sherman, if he, if they voted tonight, and it was, and, instead of tabling it, and he came back and reapplied with a different berm that's more substantial, would that, he wouldn't have to wait a year because it's a different proposal? Is that how you would understand it, or am I understanding our zoning ordinance incorrectly?
He's not, at this point, he's not been denied or approved, so coming back with a compromise, we've done this before with other, other proposals, coming back with a compromise would not have to wait a year if the item.
I, I understand the, the table process, I was just asking, Ms. Sherman, if we made, I mean, there's a real estate transaction that's on the line, so if he did want a vote tonight, and, and it didn't go the way that he wanted, and he wanted to come back with a different proposal, he wouldn't have to wait a year if it was substantially different? It wouldn't be on the next agenda, obviously, with the holidays, but it would, he'd get a vote tonight, and then if he wanted to reapply, he wouldn't, if it was different enough, would he have to wait a year?
That's why I.
I'm asking, sorry, sorry, Larry, I'm asking, um, legal counsel.
That makes sense to me, I'd have to look at your zoning ordinance more closely to answer that for sure. My only thought with tabling it right now is, if we're going to take away an aspect of the conditional use that Mr. Lowenstein considers material to what he's asking, instead of just dropping him into this conditional use that maybe doesn't work for him anymore without that piece, we could give him some time to see if it's something that he would want, and then just table that until the next meeting, if he does still want conditional use without that outdoor storage, more so than giving him an opportunity to substantially change the plan. That was all I was thinking as far as the tabling aspect of this.
That makes sense.
Makes sense, so basically just giving Mr. Lowenstein a chance to go back and review if taking away this component works or does not work for him, or for you, sir, and then says that's a bit better, and you table that to a next meeting, rather than trying to come up with a substantial plan, which A, might not make the, the meeting deadline, and/or B, might be so substantial it would need much more time to get a Planning Commission, it'd have to go in a future meeting.
Right, exactly. We just don't want to strap Mr. Lowenstein in, because the issue doesn't work.
Just keeps him out of jeopardy position, I guess, right?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
So, maybe ask him what he wants to do?
Yeah. I mean.
That sounds acceptable, I think that's probably the best for everybody.
So, we're wanting to table?
What is the best?
The, the conditional use at this time?
Table it, sorry, Sam.
Do I need to withdraw?
Yes, you would need to withdraw it.
Then I will withdraw my motion.
And Terry Horsley, would you withdraw your second, please?
I think I want the second.
Mr. Muller wants the second.
Oh, Mr. Muller, second, I'm sorry.
I want my second motion to be withdrawn.
My fault. Okay, so, the, the motion, the first, the motion and the second have been withdrawn. Do we have a new motion?
Mr. Chairman, Terry Horsley will make a motion that would table this issue to give the applicant more time to come up with a compromise, such as we've been discussing.
Is the January 7th meeting, or do you need more time?
That works.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Well, we're just, we're talking timeframes, because if you come back with a substantial change, it might be the following, the, the second meeting of the month, rather than January 7th.
If it's the same proposal.
If it's the same proposal, and you, and you accept it as is, then, you know, that's, that can be done quicker.
I would just recommend we have in the motion tabled to January 7th.
Okay, oh, I see.
So, I'll amend my motion to table this until January, the beginning of January 7th.
I'll second it.
And Mr. Mayor has seconded, do we have more discussion? None? Real call, please?
Certainly, sir. Sandlin for blue?
Yes.
Horsley?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Von Stein?
Yes.
And Vanderhorst for Smith?
Yes.
That motion's carried, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Lowenstein will, uh, Lowenstein will work on it, and let's give you a chance to see, check your own considerations too, okay?
Also, let us note for the record that the January 7th meeting for Planning Commission is a day meeting, those occur at 1:30 PM in the afternoon.
We will be in touch with you.
Okay. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have additional considerations?
I'll give a very minor update to what was going to be Agenda Item 3, but this was the, our attempt at the zoning ordinance document reformatting, just to make it more user-friendly. We've had to postpone it since the last meeting, and we're postponing it again this meeting due to some very substantiative projects that we've had to been, we've been working on as staff, but we will eventually revive the project. We still wanted to include it as part of the Agenda docket to make sure that it did get some public facing, and that people did know about it. We actually did have a citizen ask about that, and wanted more information, which staff directed to, so we'll try and keep him, as well as everybody else, looped in as much as possible. So, that's being postponed right now, and that's all I have for that item at this time, Mr. Chair.
No reports or IDOB or anything?
Uh, we do at least have the, we know that we have the January 7th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, not just because of 1930 fair grow, but also we do have a different case coming in. We have 8400 Bilstein, which is the Pinnacle Treatment. Recall that at least last year, they received a conditional use approval for a treatment center. They are coming back with an amended conditional use because they need expanded parking, and this is particularly, they're going to expand it to their adjacent next-door neighbor to the north. This is particularly needed because of the different situations and demands that have been imposed due to the COVID from this past year. So, now that they need to apply for this parking, they still need the conditional use tied to their previous conditional use, therefore, we brought before the Planning Commission as a public hearing for your view and deliberation.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anyone have anything? Hearing none, have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, I think Terry can't hear me?
Oh, Terry?
Terry?
I did not second, I put out this question around.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Matthews, would you make, was that you seconding Mayor Muller's adjournment? Okay, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? I don't think there's any. Thank you, thank you for your, thank you for your attention, and Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you all.
Happy holidays.
Thanks.
Thank you all very much for attending, we are adjourned at 9:48 PM. Thank you again, and happy holidays.
Y'all have a good night, thank you.
See ya.